Okay, I'm gonna call the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 to order. Madam City Clerk is not sitting there, but will be momentarily, and she will call the roll.
Mayor Christie Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Present.
Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. We will first have the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Ritchie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item.
Oh, Councilmember Hornish, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we add an agenda item to discuss attorney coverage regarding litigation matters in the near term.
I also...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Moran, did you have something?
I also wanted to add an agenda item.
Okay. Let's do them one at a time, if we could. That will...well, trying to think through that, because if we approve the agenda as amended... All right, let's go ahead, just make yours.
I also wanted to make a motion that we add the discussion, a discussion about the Freed House. A weird Freed House.
Okay, so, all right, we need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've got it. All right, so we have two separate motions. I probably should separate those out, because they're not related at all. So, the first one is on the attorney coverage, so we will vote on that first as an addition to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0 and one from the audience, we will add that to the agenda. The next is the addition of a discussion of the Ried Freed House, which is currently on parcel B over at Big Rock Park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we add the Ried Freed House. So now, we are approving the agenda as amended with the two additional items. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna move to adopt.
Oh, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we will add those two items to the agenda, and I will tuck them under New Business. Okay. Next, we have Public Comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a community, a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM end of Business Day to the City Clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. First, I have Stephanie M. Brooklyn Stevens.
Hello.
Good evening, council. We are here tonight to express gratitude for Councilmen Tom Hornish and Ramiro Valderrama. Thank you for your four years of service, or eight, actually, yes, for Mr. Valderrama. Thank you very, very, very much. We know that is a huge commitment.
Hi. I'm Brooklyn Stevens, and you must save a deer from cars before a deer get run over by cars.
And saving the deer from cars is another agenda that Brooklyn would always love to see. Anyway, we really sincerely want to thank you.
We're Malchow.
We're Malchow, yes, a shout-out. So, while we may not always agree on some things, it's important to know that we can count on you, and that you have served with honor.
Yeah, we can't gather you.
Yes, and are we grateful?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's all. Can you say "thank you very much"? You can say one more sentence. Your time's almost up, there's a timer.
And you always have to save a deer when cars are near deer.
When cars are near deer.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just so you always have to be there.
Can you say "thank you very much"?
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Your turn.
I'm not sure if he was pointing at James Eastman or not, but maybe, you're in that direction.
Better take note and say some nice things, too, before I get cut off and run out of time and forget to acknowledge Ramiro and Tom and your guys' service. Coming up here for Public Comment, it's not so hard for me anymore, but I remember when I first used to get up here, I mean, it takes a lot of nerve to come out to a meeting, you gotta care about stuff, and sometimes you're emotional, or maybe a little charged up. And what I see in Ramiro, I would say 90% of the meetings, you're here 20 minutes to 30 minutes before the meeting, no matter how heated the debates or the topics are. Before the meeting, you go around and you greet people, you introduce yourself, I mean, it'd be so easy just to come and get up here and hide behind the dais, but you put people at ease by doing that, and it's much appreciated. I watch it every week, how you're not afraid to talk to people, let them know you care, and then, you know, still, you know, decide on the issues. And same thing with Tom. I know you're gone quite a bit, and your time's limited, but I would say you're probably the toughest council member. If there's a 6-1 vote, you're probably the one, which is great, because you stand by what you mean, and the honesty is appreciated. I actually appreciated it so much, I invited Tom, because he's one of the toughest council members to look at some of the issues I was facing on my property, and I knew his time was limited, and he gladly met with me and walked through and looked at some of my issues. And it's just really appreciated that despite, you know, we may not agree on everything, that just the time and the effort that you guys put in, and not getting paid, a lot of times, no thanks whatsoever, that you guys put yourself out there constantly and do it as a public service. So with that said, the TMP is back on the agenda for tonight. I think the staff did a great job, you know, you see the word "statistically valid." I think to myself, yeah, they did a great job with these presentations, but so much is missing from this. Why is it missing? And it's missing because of the council direction to exclude Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, which you'll probably never hear me quite complaining about, but the state requires that we monitor our major arterials, and we purposely excluded it. I think, yeah, Table T8 was bad, you know, a lot of stuff was off in there, or maybe manipulated for concurrency's sake, but at least with T8, we're monitoring the Parkway. Now, we've chosen to exclude it whatsoever, so what's worse? When we say statistically valid, the Parkway is at 1.75. Are the projects that are way less, I mean, the closest one is Sahali at 1.25, so anyways, is it statistically valid if we just forget about it altogether? I'd encourage us to look at maybe doing some improvements down there, at least safety improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jan Byrd.
Hello, I'm Jan Byrd. I live at 3310 221st Avenue Southeast, and basically, I want to thank the city and the Parks Department for another wonderful volunteer appreciation dinner you folks had about two weeks ago. But also, I want to thank, it's kind of my turn to thank a lot of the city staff for their help with working with volunteers. I'm a member of the Samamish Community Wildlife Habitat Group and a Washington Native Plant Society Native Plant Steward, so a lot of my work has been mostly with our volunteer coordinator, LB Jones, but I think, I started looking at the list of everybody in the Parks Department, and by the end of the year, I think I've had a contact with just about everybody in that department who's been more than helpful. There's Anjali, Grayson, and Shelby are always here regarding public meetings for public park projects, so we've been involved with them with those kinds of things. Chris and Lynn have done a wonderful job with doing various events. Chris is one who brought back Earth Day. We didn't have a real Earth Day event for quite a few years, and he's just done a marvelous job. Very happy that he was Employee of the Year, very well-deserved. We've worked with Becky regarding an interpretive sign that will be going down into the Lower Commons. It was thanks to a National Wildlife Federation grant related to a habitat steward training we did earlier this year, and there was some money in that for interpretive signage. So she's worked with us and with the National Wildlife Federation, and it's here, and I guess in a couple of weeks will be installed down there. And then finally, a big thanks to Monica, who did a lot of work trying to prepare a native plant nursery for us over at Beaver Lake Park, and also a shout-out to the Maintenance Department for allowing us to have a little section of that area. These places where we salvage plants from places that were going to be developed and save them at the nursery, and then we take and put them in different parks projects. So a big thank you to all of them. And also, LB worked with the Eagle Scouts to help us, and they volunteered making the garden beds for it. Then we have Mike and Travis in maintenance. I have a feeling they have something to do with why our plants get watered. We have several irrigation systems in several of the parks where we've planted. In the first couple of years, we need water to get things going. And then a big thank you to Angie and Belle, who keep everything together and moving smoothly. Also, in Public Works, I'd like a shout-out to Lisa Ware, because she's the one who's worked with us on our stormwater projects the last couple of years. And also, when we needed a speaker for the Habitat Steward Training this year, we asked Danica, and she is such a good speaker, and she gave a talk for us on stormwater management to benefit Kokany Salmon. So I'd like to give a big thank you to our city staff who work with us and help us throughout the year. And speaking of parks projects, I know we're talking about Kohani Park, and I think they've also done a really great job of balancing the wants of the greater Samamish community with the residents of Kohani while protecting Queen's Bog. It's an improvement for the sports areas, allows for a common formal play area, adds some parking, but without changing the footprint a lot, a community garden, and by improving the quality of stormwater using natural bio-retention cells planted with native plants, and by rerouting the trail, you're protecting Queen's Bog. So thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close Public Comment. I would entertain a motion for the Consent Calendar.
I'd like to remove one.
Okay, let's get a second, and then we can discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we have discussion.
Councilmember Hornish, sorry.
I'd like to pull number 12, Custodial Services.
Okay, item 12 will get pulled. Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran.
Out of item number two, I'd like to pull check number 55751, in the amount of 850 for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull Items 2 and 12, and we'll tuck those under Unfinished Business after the Sahali Way Corridor analysis. Okay, all those in favor of the Consent Calendar as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we have amended the Consent Calendar. Okay. Next, on our agenda, we have presentations and proclamations, and we have a presentation this evening for the Community Emergency Response Team. So I think we have Andrew Stevens, who's our CERT liaison, and is going to take over here.
Good evening, thank you, council. I want to take just a moment to recognize and discuss the CERT program here in the community. That's the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT program, educates our residents about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact our community, and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. Now, basic CERT graduates are trained to respond safely, responsibly, and effectively to emergency and disaster situations, strengthening the community resiliency of Samamish at a grassroots level. Since 2003, the Samamish Citizen Court Council, in partnership with the city of Samamish, have trained over 800 residents in CERT. Having recently completed 21 hours of basic CERT classes, the individuals here tonight represent our latest cohort of CERT graduates. So I'd like to, if you could call them up, Madam Mayor, and we'll give them our certificates.
Wonderful. First, we have Anita Althard. Congratulations, thank you. Charles Denny. Ryan Dolstad. Manish Ghand. Haley Gudgeon. Dennis Ho. Roberta Junga. Perfect. So 801 residents, right? Awesome. Barath Kikari. Amy Lotz. Catherine McRuer Wong.
Moonwalking's next.
Laura Parducci. Sai Penasetti. Denise Radecki. James Vance. Holly Vance. And Will Wade. Yeah, I think we have Kate behind you here, she would love to get a photo, and you guys are welcome to stand in front of us, so, if it's easier. Thank you to all of you for participating in that program. I hope you'll go out and tell your friends and neighbors that it's a good program. It really, truly does make our entire community a safer place in the event of emergencies, so thank you so much. Next, we have a presentation. Tonight is the final council meeting for Councilmember Tom Hornish and Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama. Councilmember Valderrama has served eight years to the city of Samamish, and Councilmember Hornish, four years to the city. Both have served in the role as deputy mayor. This job is not easy, has some public-facing work, but also has a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Both of these council members have served their constituents in a variety of ways, from the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, and a variety of regional boards and committees representing Sound Cities Association and Samamish. Both have been tireless advocates for their perspectives on any given topic, and the residents of Samamish are ever grateful to you both for answering the call of public service and dedicated untold numbers of hours to this role. Your legacies will persist, and I know neither of you will stray very far from the policy setting that goes on here at the dais. Thank you both for your service to Samamish. We do have cake at the back table to celebrate you both. We have jackets ordered for you, and I have plaques to award you with, and if we can all come up and get a photograph with our council members at their final meeting. Okay, we're gonna get started again. You're welcome to continue conversations out in the hall. Our next item is a discussion on the Kohani Park Master Plan.
All right, wow, it's totally silent. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Angie Fesser, and the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities. After nine months of plan development, including considerable public engagement, the Parks and Recreation Department is delighted to bring forward the preferred master plan for Kohani Park. We are respectfully requesting for your consideration of consensus of the plan, your input for future park development phasing sequence, as well as authorization to proceed with the SEPA review process. Tonight's presentation and discussion will be led by Shelby Peralt, City Parks Project Manager, and the project consultant Juliette Wong from HBB. And with that, I'll turn it over to them to begin.
Okay, good evening. All right, so just a quick reminder, this is what we're looking for today. Let's see, did I miss? Sorry. So we're going to start off with some introductions, we're gonna go through a presentation, we're gonna try and actually keep it a little shorter if we can, so we have some room for discussion. We're gonna go through a little bit more of the background and context. I think you all are probably pretty familiar with this, but for the members of the public who might be here tonight, or who might see this later, we wanted to provide a little bit more of that background. And then we're gonna go into detailed discussion of the proposed master plan concept and some next steps and phasing discussions. As was mentioned, we're looking for consensus on the preferred master plan. We've got some different phasing sequences for our next steps that we'd like to have for discussion, and hopefully get authorization to proceed with the SEPA review process. Starting into location and context, so Kohani Park is located in the Kohani neighborhood. You can see it down compared to where we are up here in the commons. The reason we still like to bring this up is it's important to recognize that it's part of a larger system. We have Beaver Lake Park just to the north of us, and its large natural system associated with it. We also have a number of schools and other park facilities in the context. So when we start looking at what is immediately around Kohani Park, there's actually a really wonderful system of trails and open space that's part of the neighborhood as well, so that when you go to approach a master plan concept, you're not designing in a vacuum, you're considering what else is available to the community while you're looking at programming and uses for the park. It is also part of an overall Parks and Recreation System in the city, so we always like to look back to what the vision is for the overall system, and what the Parks Recreation goals are, in this case, conserving natural resources, improving health and wellness, and opportunities to create social equity in the park system. So these are all elements that are also important to consider as we look through the master planning process. The proposed plan itself had its own Parks Public Process, and so some of the top priorities and the top elements that were important to the community as part of that process was fields, and you can see the words, the larger the word, the more the community members mentioned it as part of their response to the question. So what was important, fields, trails, open space, play, parks, and you can see the types of amenities and uses that were of interest, playgrounds, trails, walking area, picnic areas. A lot of these things that we start to look at and consider part of family activities, as well as just the active programmable spaces. Our project started, and actually, the park started when, as part of the Homeowners Association, it was transferred to King County in 1994, and then transferred to the city in 2016. There were some minor improvements done in 2017, just to be able to make sure it was able to be continued to be used, but nothing major in recognition of this master planning process. So, our project timeline, we started a little while ago. We spent a fair amount of time really understanding what the site, the analysis, the background was, for the context of the park itself, the park programming, how it's used, how it could be used, who wants to use it, and then developing a series of concepts and getting a lot of public feedback throughout this process. So we're at the, towards the end of our stage, working our way towards adoption, and hoping we get that consensus from you tonight. This is a typical, kind of a diagram of a typical master planning process. We starting again with the site analysis and scoping a series of public meetings, and where we're at right now is the very end of the Stage Four, where we have gone through alternatives analysis. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, developed a preferred alternative, got more feedback from the community, are in here tonight with the final proposal. One of the elements of existing conditions that I think is predominant in the park, and that is also very dear to the community, is Queen's Bog. When you look at it from the entire park system and the property line, it is a predominantly natural park with just a small corner of the area that is given over to athletics, play, restroom, and more program spaces. There's also three easements that run across the property that are important constraints to consider through the process. There is the BPA easement that also contains the East Plateau Trail. There is a tower within that easement, you see in the photo here, that has a higher level of constraints surrounding that tire for access, or the tower for access, and then there's the Williams Gas Line and a Puget Sound easement that also fall across the property. The active recreation areas consist of a cricket pitch and two soccer lacrosse fields, also used for a variety of other similar sports. There is a practice pitch that is now installed on the side off to the side, and then a Little League softball, baseball field. There's existing parking, and a small restroom and playground that also support the park off in this corner. This is the existing trail and some soft surface trails that also fall along the existing powerline easement. This is a representation of the natural systems within the park, so the predominant system being Queen's Bog. There is also a series of smaller wetlands. We have five smaller wetlands associated with Queen's Bog that all are part of a larger natural system, and one wetland that falls just off our site on the school property as well. And I think it's just important to think about the context, not just within our own park, but again, what immediately surrounds our park, and how all those systems feed together. Stormwater has been a discussion topic and a strong element throughout our master planning process. It led us to really take a look beyond our boundary and understand how stormwater is affecting Queen's Bog. Where is the water coming from? How is it treated? What is the area draining into the bog? And some of the things we found is that it's not just the park, while the park falls within the park property along with the bog, the actual drainage basin is significantly larger, represented in this area. There's a number of direct outfalls, as well as indirect outfalls, that feed into the bog, and at the end of the day, whatever we do within the park to help filter and treat stormwater will improve and impact positively the bog. There is, in addition, related to stormwater, there's a well that exists up in the powerline easement area. It's part of an aquifer recharge zone and a protected well zone as well, so those have also considerations similar to how we would look at stormwater and just ensuring we have a clean natural system. There are two associated projects that also will be addressing stormwater affecting the bog. One is a city project that is looking at a basin-wide study to understand how stormwater is affecting the bog and where that stormwater is coming from, what the opportunities and challenges will be to help... challenges will be to help how we can treat that stormwater. That process is currently on hold until the spring of 2020. Then there is also a Department of Natural Resources project. They are looking at all of the bog systems within the Puget Sound, Queen's Bog being one of them, and doing some additional research and findings. That report should be available towards the end of 2020. So just recognizing that whatever we do to improve stormwater within the park will improve Queen's Bog, but it is part of, a small part of a much larger system that can have another higher level of impact on how the systems all work together. Okay, we want to go into summarizing what we've heard from the community. We started our visioning process, really just asking people to understand what they thought of, what was important to them with the park the way it was, how they wanted to vision, what kinds of words were they used to describe their vision. And you see in our little word cloud in the bottom, the types of words that came out of that process. Natural, nature, family, play, park, open space, are all the types of words that we heard, reinforcing what really became a guiding principles for our master plan project, first and foremost, to protect Queen's Bog. Within that, also to look for ways that we can celebrate it, understand it, recognize what it is without getting too close to it. Then to gather and celebrate, we heard from a lot of people that the program, the park where it is now, is heavily programmed, so when people are using those fields, there's just not a lot of room for anything else. And so there was a strong need to have places for people to come together, places to celebrate themselves, their family, their friends, their community. And then to really balance those passive and active activities. I think there was a recognition that both are important to the community, but there needs to be a balance between them. That led us to developing a series of master plan alternatives. I'm not going into any detail on these, so you can ask me some questions later, but we looked at both open space alternatives, trail alternatives, and then the character, the type of look and feel of how people might want to see this park in the future. To say, essentially, people liked things that had a lighter footprint. They liked the concepts that left things fairly natural, that did not rearrange things too much, and that really maintained that sense of welcoming, open feeling that you have when you approach the park. They did not like anything that had synthetic fields or that had any impact or encroached into the bog or the natural systems at all. On the trails, the same thing. They really liked things that were the lighter footprint, that did not expand trails or get any closer to the bog with those trails. So protection of that bog and natural systems was definitely a theme we heard throughout. And it fell into what kinds of characters people really liked to see as well. Much more natural, rustic, things that really would relate to and feel in context with the natural environment. We did a public survey. It is kind of phenomenal how many people responded to the survey. Very, very heavily used, and that 58% of the participants visit the park at least weekly. There is always somebody out there at that park. And then when you think about, really, when we asked people how important different elements of the park was, you know, understanding the bog, protecting the bog was very much important. Not so important was how much you get into the bog, overlooking it, you know, really trying to get people into to see it or experience it. I think there's a strong recognition that it should continue to stay protected. And what you really see here is a lot of fairly even responses to a lot of these questions, reinforcing that need for a balance. All right, the preferred master plan. So what we looked at, and we'll get into detail of the programmable spaces, but starting at a larger scale, you basically have a series of trail systems. There's an existing trail that would be improved as it continues along the northern corner of the site across the top. That would be part of the sidewalk system as a paved trail. And then you also have the regional trail that continues along the BPA easement. What we are proposing to do is to very, kind of soften this trail a little bit. We reorganize it a little. We make it a little smoother, a little curvilinear, and allow a little bit more of a meandering type of character as we go along through it. We maintain the bog as it is, and in fact, actually propose removing a series of trails that start to encroach too far into the bog, restoring those areas as part of a mitigation project. It is important to note that our park actually ends short of the actual open space, so there's a segment of what we included very much as part of our master plan for context, but recognizing that it's actually the Klahani Homeowners Association that will control what happens in this area outside of the park. You will continue to see elements of our master plan that extends into those areas, identifying them as a partnership approach for any future implementation. Zooming into the, what is more the programmable open space, essentially what we are proposing here is to keep the soccer fields where they are now as natural soccer fields. We do shift things a little bit, and by doing that, we're able to expand the use of the cricket to almost a full cricket pitch. Currently, the cricket pitch is fairly wide, but it's almost a perfect circle, and it's a little squatty on two ends. So what we basically do is it's still a little squatty, and we do that in order to preserve the hillside and the existing trees on the south side. This is the number, existing stand that's called Number Six down here. But we do expand it, so we have a little bit more space, so it's much closer to a full size. We continue to maintain a practice pitch off to the side. This is proposed as all natural. The parking lot is expanded a little bit. Essentially, when this was built, it was built to a different standard by building it, by restriping it to current standards and expanding just a little bit towards the park side. We're able to get about another row of parking in here. And then we do expand it just a little bit to the north to allow a drop-off spot. One of the elements of this drop-off spot is it gets people a little bit closer to a community garden, which is proposed within the power line easement. And then one of the major shifts we have is, as part of redoing the soccer field, we relocate the restroom and the playground to a position a little more central into the park and a little to the north. That gets it away from the road. It gives it a much more central location and allows a lot more opportunities for both small and larger events to happen within the new community green and a lot of seating that could happen here for smaller events, and you could continue to use the field for those larger events. Another element here, in order to make that happen, is to actually shift the baseball field over, so it would be a Little League field as well. This would have a natural outfield. We are still proposing a synthetic infield. That is primarily due to the maintenance considerations of that infield and the long-term, just the longevity of the use. And then within this, the other major element we have is a large expansion of the stormwater facility, so we can really get a much more natural progression of stormwater and a much more enhanced treatment of all of the stormwater. The space is still not enough to treat all of the stormwater within the site, so additional stormwater capacity would be managed within the base layers underneath the fields. For trails within the park, we have an existing loop trail that would be paved, that would follow around the main soccer field complex. We have a secondary set of trails that would be accessible as well, through boardwalks that would come through the stormwater facilities, and then a series of smaller loops that would happen around the rest of the facilities within the park. The character we're proposing is to keep very natural, so bringing in more natural materials, more kind of intuitive types of play, nature play elements, in addition to some more structured play. The community gardens would be used with a little bit softer touch as well, being within the power line easement. It needs to have the ability for power line and the power company to still come through, and if any, in emergency, be able to kind of relocate some of those elements. And then looking at a lot of seating, a lot of enhancements of native planting, pollinator gardens, a lot of opportunity to get a lot richer kind of experience through the public elements of this. Trails would be predominantly paved, but we are allowing for some secondary trails that might be more soft surface as we get closer into the forested areas, keeping accessibility in mind, of course. And then looking at the similar amenities for shelters, more gathering spaces, more variety of places for different size events. So what we're looking for tonight, we're going to go through some of the phases. We're asking how you'd prioritize the development of the park itself in terms of phasing. The first phase that we're going to describe is what we call the Trails Phase. It basically would be removing and replanting the informal trails. There's a series of informal trails that encroach either very close to or right up to the edge of the bog and the wetland systems. So we'd propose removing any trails that are within those buffer areas and relocating them out of the buffer. It would also improve, like I said, the existing trails. There's some heaving asphalt. There's some disrepair and some pavement condition, so we would replace and repair those and start to look at ways we can improve the connection and kind of highlight that connection north to Bear Creek. The second phase is the cricket and the soccer fields. So this really focuses just on that loop path that we discussed and the soccer fields that are within it. And that does also include some of the seating in the gathering areas along that system. There is a play area ball field phase, so that takes essentially everything else for the programmable elements. It would relocate the ball field, expand the playground, add the community garden, the restroom facility, and some additional picnic areas also around that. I will say the playground, one of the major elements, is not just shifting the playground, but it's also a significant expansion. The existing playground right now really only serves the two to five capacity, and so by relocating it, we have the room and the space to really make it a much more accessible playground and also a playground for all ages. The last phase is really what we call the Support Facilities. It's not quite intended as a phase in and of itself, but it's a recognition that regardless of what phase goes first between the soccer and the ball fields, we would have to do the Support Facilities to go along with it. So again, this goes along with either the soccer or the ball field play area phase, but it includes the parking improvements and all of the stormwater improvements. So what we heard when we presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee Commission, they voted unanimously to proceed with the preferred plan as it's shown. They had quite a discussion over cricket versus soccer fields, and they, at the end of the day, decided that they would like to see the cricket soccer fields as the first phase, and of course, the Support Facilities that would go along with that. We also heard some specific feedback from Klahani and their association that they also support the preferred master plan. A couple of elements from that last workshop when we proposed and showed the preferred master plan, I think the majority of people that attended also were very supportive of it. The couple of comments that we did hear from the community was a concern about removing trails. It turns out that there is, the high school uses it for their cross-country, and a lot of people just really enjoy running on something that is not a hard surface trail. I think there was a recognition that trails don't have to be within the buffer, but that to still have some informal trails was desired in the park. And then the other element was from the community gardens, some concern about having a community garden right under the power lines. At the end of the day, there's also a recognition, though, that there isn't really a spot that isn't under a power lines within the whole Klahani Association. Their existing community gardens is getting shaded out by the natural forest that's starting to take over and around it. So I think there is maybe some concern that we can start to address long-term with how that might be conveyed, but it was still supported to have a community gardens.
All right, and with that, I'm happy to go into any more detail if I went over something a little bit more too fast and open it up to any questions and discussions.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I want to go back to the trails. And my questions were with the trails, how long have those trails been, the ones that are going through the bog? How long have those trails been in place? And what is the surface currently on them? And is there a problem with them, problem with users on them? And why are we thinking about removing them?
So I can get started a little bit on that. A lot of those trails, the only formal trails that were built when the park was built was the paved surface trails, those hard surface trails that are there now. The informal trails that have come up has really come up more as users kind of creating them, coming off to themselves. Some of them may have been developed by the Homeowners Association over time, although I don't have any specific details for that. A couple of them do feel very improved, like they have been used intentionally over time, but we don't have any documentation of exactly when they were in place. The concern with having those trails is really the proximity of those trails close to the bog. There has not been a lot of history of things within the trails themselves or people doing things on the trails, but as soon as you get off a main trail system and start to encroach closer into that bog, you're bringing a potential activity towards that bog that can be detrimental to the bog itself. There was a lot of discussion in the open houses about the fire that happened, about the potential of transients in this area, and the more access you have to more hidden portions of the park, the more concerned that you could have a repeat of that type of activity, and that's not something a bog can really recover from. So the fact that there is a trail isn't so much the concern itself, it's the location of those trails and trying to get those further away from the bog itself, although it does leave open the opportunity to still have informal trails, just not so close to the bog.
Okay, I've got a son that, I mean, this is years ago, that did use those trails for cross-country runs, so I'm just questioning whether...
Councilwoman Ritchie.
Thank you. So I want to, first off, thank you. This is really, really good. I'm definitely impressed by what you've come up with and that folks, you know, gave their input and that there was a really clean plan. It looks really, really good. But I had just a couple of questions here, and I hopefully, I recognize that I've got a little bit of a time limit, so I'll try to be quick here. The overall park, overall Klahani Park is 64 acres. Can you tell me what the usable area is? And when I say usable, I don't mean the bog.
I want to say it's like six to 10 acres?
Okay. Is there a threshold that we use in the city? Maybe the city manager, the city attorney can help us with what constitutes a city park versus a neighborhood park. Is there a threshold that we use in terms of the acreage?
Yeah, so our pro-plan identifies different categories for the park types based on the overall acreage. So that 64 acre is a community park, and I believe it's, in general, five to 15 is a neighborhood park.
Okay. So are you, is this the only park in the city that has essentially, I'm sorry, you said eight to 10, I missed it. Six to 10, call it 10 acres, just for fun here. If 10 acres is recreational park versus wetlands and bog, is this the only park in the city, or are there other parks in the city that are under city control and city ownership that have a similar, you know, one-sixth is usable, so to speak? Is there anything like that going on?
I will let Angie answer that.
Yes, Beaver Lake Park is about 80 acres, and a small portion of that is active recreation where the ball fields are on the south side.
Okay.
And the rest of that is pretty natural due to wetlands and...
And those trails.
And so that's another example, and trails throughout. And then you have the lakeside improvements where the lodges.
Right.
So that's another example of a large community park, but a lot of it's still being pretty preserved and undeveloped.
Undeveloped, except for the trails, right, okay. The projected cost of the modifications under the preferred plan?
Yes, I brought my little cheat sheet. So the Trails Phase itself would be about $2 to $3 million, and I will say all of these costs are what we'd call whole project costs, so they include contractor contingencies, mobilization overhead, sales tax, and soft costs for administration design, right? So all of that adds up a significant amount. So including all of those costs, the trails are about $2 to $3 million for all of the trail improvements. The play area and ball field phase would be about $7 to $8 million.
Seven to eight?
Seven to eight million. The soccer phase, the soccer cricket area with its loop path, would be about $5 to $6 million. And those Support Facilities that would have to go with either the play or the soccer would be about $1.5 to $2 million. So you're upwards of like 16, 18 to 20 million for the entire park, depending on how you sort of slice and dice it over time.
The impact of the existing, or the impact of adding the trails around the bog and the surrounding wetlands, I was one of the families affected by the fire in the bog, so is there a, are the trails that you're putting in, and I guess this kind of leads to my other question about the proximity of the synthetic fields, is there a question from an environmental perspective? I'm not questioning whether or not you would do something that's unsafe for the bog. I'm not going there. I'm asking, is there a proximity to the bog that has been taken into consideration with the synthetic fields and the infield, or synthetic material in the infield and the bogs, or the trail around the bog? And I recognize you're pulling it away, but I think you just mentioned using different materials for the trail itself. Is that accurate than what's there, more, less natural or more natural?
Pretty much the same. So the existing paved trails within the power line and along the north end would continue to stay paved. We are looking at some additional paved trails within the improved portion of the park. That's these blue lines that I popped up again here that you see on the plans. There is some potential soft surface trail. There's a little bit of a trail that just barely encroaches into the edge of the buffer, and that allows us to get a loop around the park and start to get a little of that natural experience. That could be soft surface, because it doesn't necessarily need to be accessible in that area, but everything else would either be a boardwalk or a paved accessible trail. There's a few connections that could be crushed rock or mulch, which is what those informal trails are now, is just kind of that dirt mulch kind of system.
Got you, okay. The, do you, I guess, just separate issue... The, do you, I guess, just separate issue, the outstanding cost of, well, we can get to Big Rock Park Site B, I was curious as to what the outstanding cost was to open that, but I'll get to that later. Does the rock, being a Klahani resident, does that stay where it is? Are you going to pick it up and move it somewhere? You're not getting rid of it, are you?
We're not getting rid of it, and thank you for asking. I did forget to mention that. So I mentioned we're preserving the existing grove of trees, that's number 6 down here. The existing playground sits right in this corner, and that rock sits about halfway in between the two. It really does kind of push pretty close to the roadway, which we heard some concerns about, but it is a pretty iconic element within the park. What we are proposing with this plan is to just relocate the rock back into the actual playground so we can incorporate it as part of a natural, larger play system.
Well, I like that you're moving it away from the street. That's always a, you know, that's a concern, because it is up on a hill and it's not the safest place to have a rock that high, so. Cool, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it. I think it's a really, really good plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you, thank you for putting it together and taking this input in. And my first question already was taken by Councilmember Ritchie of the cost, I've got it now, that likely around $20 million. One of the things that I don't see here, and when this was first brought to the council before I was on there, somewhere around 2010, Klahani was looking for the city to look at it. The city interest was how do we make it more usable for more people, artificial fields, et cetera, so that they could increase the usage? As I recall, the city is underserved on open fields for the kids 50%, so that was a big issue. This preferred plan, I don't see any increased usage. I see you moved the ball field, and so that's a first of a concern. The second one is, you've now made the ball field in this preferred plan, the synthetic turf infield and that. And somewhere around 2012, we had a similar issue come up with Eastlake High School where the city participated in that, and then by putting artificial fields into it, we were able to increase its usage by making it not just a baseball field, but also for usage for soccer, lacrosse, and some of those that are actually in higher demand, not to say that baseball isn't, but just to make it even more usable for the year. I don't see that in this plan. Is there a reason for why that didn't happen and why we didn't make those fields more usable?
So what is included in the plan is a reconstruction of the fields to improve the drainage, to provide a more solid system, to provide a more engineered surface that will last longer, but we did leave it as a natural field. The main rationale for that is the public comment that we've heard and a lot of concerns we heard. In particular, when you look at how close we are to the bog, there's a lot of concern with synthetic surfacing, what would happen with synthetic surfacing, how is the stormwater treated with that surfacing, and frankly, just the visual character of the surfacing, the need to provide fencing around the surfacing were all really strong concerns that we heard from throughout the process. We did still bring in the synthetic surfacing just for the infield because it has such a strong impact on longevity, maintenance, and use of a ball field, to have it synthetic on the infield, but at the end of the day, chose to really leave it to the natural system for the edges. You will get improved use through these improvements, but you will not have quite the same intensity of use as you might otherwise have with synthetic fields.
I assume there will be discussion or deliberation by council after this, or so this is just questions?
We're just asking questions right now.
Yeah, okay. I shall return.
Councilmember Hornish.
I'll hold some of my comments until deliberations, but a couple of questions. Can you go to slide 26, please?
Where's my number? Oh, there it is.
And can you refresh or state again what your takeaway from these three points were?
So with the first element, how important is it to overlook Queens Bog? This was really showing the concerns of wanting to educate for the bog, but still protect the bog. So a lot of people felt it was somewhat or very important to provide an overlook so you could see, understand what the bog was. A lot of people felt it was not important, very, not very or not important at all. And the feedback, when you look into the people who said that comment, was keep people away from the bog. So that's that first element. How important is it to provide an overlook to the wetlands was similarly, I think there was a little less on the importance of this one because it's the wetlands and a recognition more towards the bog itself as being the more important element. Again, you have to kind of get into the details of what people said when they were commenting on these. And how important is it to provide trails or boardwalks in the wetland buffers? You see really kind of 50/50 in being very important or not so important. So these were just a snapshot of the types of questions we asked, and we pulled these because they were indicative of a lot of that 50/50 approach where we heard lots of yays and lots of nays. And one of the larger takeaways when you get into the details of what people said as they were responding to these questions was a lot of desire for active recreation, family activities, being able to use the park, but at the same time, a whole lot of comments about protecting and not expanding beyond the existing footprint that we had. And that was a big discussion, I think, we had when we presented at one of the previous study groups. The footprint of the existing park was, was kind of held true and dear to not expand beyond that. So that's that balance I was referring to. We just happened to pull a few of those examples.
Well, and I think I agree with that sentiment. I'm not sure this supports that, given the numbers, because if you throw the no preference into the not important or not very, you have a 6 to 4 ratio that says it's not a big issue for the people. Now, I disagree with that. I think it is a big issue, to be fair, but I think we have to be careful not to skew the data to what we want it to say versus what it says, just as a comment. But generally, I do agree with you that we need to take care of the bog. The other question I have, or two more questions. The consensus that you're looking for tonight is only as to the 169,000 to move forward for the SEPA and the preliminary plans, is that correct?
So it's for authorization to move forward with the SEPA checklist, and then we will come back...
Can you get closer to the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So for the, to begin the SEPA process and then come back to you once the SEPA process is completed to formally adopt the plan, and then with that in the agenda, you'll also see costs for all the different phasings as well.
So if we're, well, I'll wait till, I'll wait, okay.
If I may add to that answer, we're not asking for any authorization for expenditure tonight. The 169,000 you see in the agenda bill was what was already approved and paid for the master plan. We're not asking for any additional funding, if that was your question.
But in effect, you are, because you're asking, we're going to do this plan that's going to cost 20 million, and you can approve it later, but you're asking us to spend 169,000 now to do a $20 million plan?
169,000 was for the master plan, that's almost...
That's going to cost $20 million.
Okay, sure.
Right? Okay, I just want to be clear, okay. If you were to do it in phases, how many years would you think it would take to do the four phases?
So those various phases could happen as quickly or as, take as long as it might need to based on your funding. So if you were to build everything all at once, you typically can have some efficiency in your costs, and you could get the whole thing done within, if you had it fully funded now, you could get the whole thing done generally within about 2 to 3 years. By phasing it out, you're going to generally take obviously more time to fund it, more time to develop those plans and build it. So you're stretching things out probably closer to the 5 to even 10 or 20 years, depending on how much you fund and at what point in time you do fund it.
Okay. I do have a third question, I'm sorry, I lied. Just to follow up on Councilmember Valderrama's point about what we had originally done this for, or went down this process to start the analysis, for $20 million, what are we getting in addition to what's there currently? We're moving the playground, moving the restrooms? What are we getting in addition for that $20 million?
Right, so two points to that to kind of help convey maybe a little bit more detail than what I had in the presentation. So the main element of what you're getting out of that, the new sort of uses in programmable spaces that you're getting out of that is a much expanded playground. You just don't have the space where it's currently located to expand it, and then because of the configuration of the existing fields, there's not really a spot that you can put an expanded playground. So you're getting the ability to have a much larger age group and abilities and accessibility to the playground. You're getting a much larger component of just open space for anybody to use when events or games are currently going on. Right now, there's only one small edge of the park that's even open, and it's not very accessible, not very usable. It's on the outfield of the existing ball fields. So when those actual games are going on, which is a lot of your peak use times, there is no other spot for people to come and actually gather if they're not part of an active recreation program. So you're getting a number of those types of facilities, both a single large community gathering space in that central green, as well as a number of facilities kind of scattered throughout the park to support smaller, large programmed uses, shelters, group gatherings, those kinds of things. You are getting an improvement to the trail system, and you are getting some improved use by redoing those fields. Now, what is important to note is that part of this process, a lot of discussion was had around how much more use, how much more can use can we get, what happens if you get more use, what's the implications of synthetic fields by getting more use? And one of the important things to think about is these are all, all existing fields that you have now, but they're all in a state of disrepair, and they're going to continue down that state of disrepair. Regardless of whether it's a synthetic field or a natural field, it has a lifespan associated with those improvements. So at some point, you are going to need to redo those fields.
When?
And so the element of these, what we're proposing here is, and the reason we phased it and located some things the way we did was so that you actually have the ability, as those fields deteriorate to a point they need to be replaced, you can continue to do that in phases and improve it in, more in line with this master plan over time.
So for the extended playground, was that the purpose of why we went on this trek to come up with a plan? Was that, was that a stated reason of why we wanted to study this?
So part of the reason that we also moved forward with the master plan was that Klahani Park was added to our system with the annexation a number of years ago. And so we wanted to look at Klahani Park and how it functions as a park within our entire system and what it can provide the residents of all of Sumamish. And so that was one of the primary reasons to take a look at this park and the current amenities. Another piece I want to add to the previous answer is the fields that are there are aging out. This is a King County park, this is originally a HOA park, they're starting to age out, and those fields will need to be rebuilt at some point. The restroom is small, the playground is for 5 to 12-year-olds, it's limited. To go in and renovate the park as is without moving any elements will cost about 12 to 15 million dollars over the next 5, 10, 12 years.
I'm sorry, it costs how much?
12 to 15.
Additional?
If, if, to replace the existing park as is without doing any of these improvements.
Access to what's already here.
No.
No.
Instead of.
Oh, okay.
Instead of, if we didn't do any improvements. So when you look at that, these fields are going to have to be rebuilt at some point anyway. So another reason to do the plan is to say, if we're going to go in and redo the soccer field, the cricket field, let's now rebuild it into this configuration of the master plan. So those pieces are, the phases, you're able to break out enough to do phased work with that as well. So we do have expenditures coming related to this park in its current condition. So the master plan gives us some options to make improvements and changes.
Do you have an, you keep using this term "at some point." When do you think you would have to do that?
We are actually currently working on athletic field study that is evaluating all of the ball fields in our community, so that will give us additional data and to when our current fields are going to start to really age out. But the, the quality of the field continues to deteriorate, right? Drainage issues, it becomes compacted, the grass wears out, you have to start throwing more fertilizer, more water on it. So it's just a matter of time and based on usage. So first quarter of next year, we're hoping to finish up the athletic field study, which will give us a lot more information for all our fields in the community.
Okay, I'll hold my comments for deliberation.
Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. So a couple of questions. The, the trail work, if I understand it correctly, is, a lot of it is to move, either eliminate the trails that are near the bog or move them away from the bog, correct?
Correct, that would be the new trails. A lot of the cost that you see and that, I think I said like 2 to 3 million, is actually to rebuild some of the existing trails as well that are deteriorating. So the significant cost is not, is not really in just removing some informal trails, the bulk of that cost is more in the actual repaving and redoing of those existing trails.
Okay, and then the, if I understand correctly, the trails, at least that are used for the cross-country races, are actually not in this park. They're actually across the other side of Klahani Boulevard, isn't that correct? So the, by eliminating these trails that are encroaching on the bog, we would not be impacting Skyline High School's cross-country meets?
No, just the daily.
So what we heard from the community was practices, but we heard from a couple of individuals.
Yeah, in talking to the coach for Pine Lake or for Beaver Lake Middle School, the primary trails that they use within Klahani Park are the asphalt trail that runs along Southeast 32nd.
Right.
And that will be maintained.
Right, okay, because the, the cross-country meets actually don't happen in this park at all. So, so the, the trail work to remove those trails seems like an important thing, because if we do go back to the data for a moment, I just want to get clarification, because I understood the data slightly differently than Councilmember Hornish. So if we look at question number one, how important is it to provide an overlook to Queens Bog? He said, you know, if you add in the, the no preference, you've got about 60% say it's not important at all. And so I think that if I, if I understand that correctly, it's, at least half the people don't think it's important. If you add in the no preference, you have a majority of people that say, we don't want to get any closer to the bog, because an overlook would actually take people closer to the bog, correct? And so I think, I think the data does support that people in general don't really want us to get closer to the bog for fear that that will just invite a deterioration of the bog. Do I understand that correctly?
When you look into the written comments that people expressed as part of the survey, that's the overall impression that you get as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. And then, is it possible to phase this in a different order? So could we phase it so that the, the items that may have the biggest impact on the environment would go first? So like you right now have, the stormwater improvements coming last, is there any reason why we wouldn't do those earlier?
So the stormwater improvements would, aside from the trails, which are kind of an independent phase, and the stormwater of the trails is handed very differently, that water is, goes through natural systems before it goes anywhere near the bog. The stormwater systems for either the playground ball field phase or the soccer field phase, whichever one goes first, those stormwater improvements would also go first with that phase.
Okay, because I thought you said that phase four was the parking lot and stormwater.
Yeah, that's the unfortunate part about having to number things. So the numbering is just in the way that we presented it, that phase four, we pulled it aside so that we could recognize that that phase goes with either two or three, whichever one happens first.
Got it. Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. All right, so the stormwater would go not with trails, but with whichever ball field or that you did first?
Correct.
And is there a way, I mean, I assume that trying to do the stormwater improvement without any of the ball field improvements would just make it a lot more expensive, is that correct?
It, it really depends on how it goes. The hard part about doing the stormwater phase without the ball field phase is designing what you're actually capturing and treating. So you would want your stormwater to actually, to account for the final design of the space, the support facilities. Is it exactly an 8-foot wide path, a 6-foot or a 10-foot in some areas? Those are a lot of design decisions that happen down in that final design phase. Your stormwater would need to reflect those decisions. So you could conceivably do a plan where you, your first phase was to design the whole thing, but only improve the stormwater, and then you would go through a process of deciding, well, how much stormwater, how much do you improve what's existing, how much do you build of a future that you don't actually have fully designed yet?
So you could do the stormwater, but you'd want to only do it if you had the approved design, so you at least knew what you were designing, that stormwater system to be.
And then there's some, yeah, potentially, there's some additional complications with how long does it take you to build the rest of it? You might have to go back and redo your stormwater, because stormwater codes and everything change over time, so you're never quite sure if you're building it to the right set, the right design standard or design elements. So there's some potential, you lose cost efficiency that way. Having said that, there is conceivably some improvements you could do to a stormwater system that would be beneficial in a short term, but you would probably have to redo it in a long term once you've built a larger phase of the project.
Got it. And then Councilmember Ritchie already kind of mentioned, but just from a cross-country trail standpoint, I will point out that I would love to see us look at like Big Rock Park Site B to be able to provide better trails for Skyline High School. The current trails that they use for their cross-country races are, it's not actually an official 5K in... an official 5K in length. So their meets are not official meets because they're actually just shy of the appropriate distance. And they actually do run under the power lines and are, a good bit of it are on pretty hard compacted surface. So it's not exactly the ideal cross-country route anyway. So I think there are, I definitely want us to make sure we take that in consideration as we look across our park system, but I think there are probably places where we could do a much better job to provide those, those athletes a better place to live and actually let them have an official meet as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Thank you. On the design with the cricket fields, does a cricket game render the adjacent fields unusable?
A full cricket match uses both soccer fields. So the space for the cricket field encompasses that entire, both soccer fields, that whole space within the trail system, that loop trail.
As a result, are the, currently are the soccer fields fully utilized? And is there excess demand over field access due to some of the conflicts with the cricket field?
So in response to the cricket using both of the soccer fields, we did actually install a practice pitch this year that's just to the west of the two fields. And that has alleviated about a third of the hours that the Cricket League is renting to open up that time for the soccer team to use the fields. That being said, we don't have all of the data on how well utilized or if there is enough capacity at Kohani for the soccer teams. That is coming as part of the athletic field study. But what we do know is the number of hours that have been opened up as a result of the practice pitch being shifted to the side of the fields.
Okay. And I noticed on slide eight, when we talk about the pro plan, word cloud, fields was one of the most common words used as important. Then you get the visioning exercise on slide 20 and then fields is very small. Is it the different samples of people taking the survey? Is it more directed to a special purpose? What's your, what's your interpretation of that huge disconnect?
So if you just want from more just observation, I was not part of the pros plan. So there's probably some that Shelby can add to this. When you go to the city and you have a citywide, the pros plan is citywide, you're engaging kind of the all residents equally and you have a much larger distribution of people who are participating because it affects everybody. You get, sometimes get a different skew of interests as associated with that. And Kohani, one of the, the elements you saw was just how many people used Kohani Park itself on a daily basis. I didn't point out to it, but another graph on that same page showed how many, how close, how close people lived to Kohani who responded to the survey. And the vast majority of our survey participants really came from the neighborhood within walking distance of that park. So the interests of the people immediately adjacent to that park are going to vary a little bit compared to what you see as a citywide need. So there is a recognized citywide need for fields that you see in this slide that you're not necessarily going to see when you're talking about your, the neighbors immediately adjacent to Kohani Park.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd like to drill down on the recondition or replacement of the fields. A number was thrown around 12 to 15 million. And I just Googled for fun, what does it cost to install an astroturf field? And it's conservative articulated. And they said it's more expensive initial cost than a natural turf field. And they're talking 475 square foot for 80,000 square foot typical field for about $380,000 each. Where does the 12 to 15 million dollars come? Because I don't think, you're, it almost sounded like Angie, you were arguing that either we're going to pay 12 to 15 as is, or we're going to improve and make it longer term, better maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That number really puzzles me from a cost standpoint.
Right. So there are a lot of other costs associated with installing a new ball field other than just the ball field. There's infrastructure and stormwater is one of them. So our stormwater regulations are pretty stringent here in Sammamish. And so the expenses related to stormwater are quite high for that project because it's considered an impervious surface when you disturb a ball field and reinstall it. The other thing to think about is the existing soccer, cricket area and baseball field are natural turf right now, but they do not really have a drainage system. And so what's being watered and irrigated and fertilized into those fields can work its way into the bog. So when those fields are being renovated, there will be an infrastructure drainage system installed underneath the fields to capture the water that goes onto those fields and treat it before it works itself back into the natural system. So a lot of those costs are associated with those underlying utilities and infrastructure systems to support the ball fields.
So we recently reconditioned or improved stormwater drainage for the baseball field area. Is that correct?
Right. We did some preliminary improvements to the ball field with the help of a grant.
And how, how much did that cost? That, that infrastructure?
I think it was 350,000 for the baseball field.
So we keep, we keep climbing to 12 million real quick. I'm just troubled. I mean, I guess I don't trust the numbers.
Okay. I can speak specifically to the Kohani drainage improvements that were done about two years ago. And those were focused solely on putting in a warning track around the field and then shifting in the infield to allow for another irrigation line so that all the grass could be watered and a little bit more playable. And then also work on some of the surfacing on the infield. So it was a very surface level improvement. It wasn't getting into the level of detail that this would require.
And then I can speak in greater detail to the costs themselves. So if you were to Google, what does it cost to put field turf? For example, what's the cost of synthetic surfacing? What's the cost of natural surfacing? You'll get a lot of different data in those numbers. And what you mostly get is the cost of the surfacing material itself. And what they don't include in that cost is, as Angie mentioned, it's the, the substructure and the drainage improvements. But they also don't include the improvements to the stormwater pond that then treats it, not just the drainage and the understory, but how you actually, what you have to do now to treat those ponds and those surfaces is extremely more extensive than what you would have to do on a normal basis. That's not included in those costs. The other things that aren't included in those costs are the trails that get you to them, the accessibility, the paths, making sure, improving, you know, adding some of the parking stalls in there, even resurfacing, even if you didn't expand the parking, just resurfacing the parking and then treating that parking because you're now resurfacing. You know, doing some of those until improvements are part of the 12 to 15 million that aren't part of that. So a typical synthetic surfacing field outside of all of the rest of the park improvements can easily run about 2 million plus or minus to actually just completely redo a field with the drainage and the rest of the improvements associated with it. You have two large fields, about a half an extra field plus the ball field. So you have, you know, three, three and a half equivalent of fields that you have in those areas, plus the size of about another field and other support facilities. So that's how you start to add up. The other main element that's not included in the numbers that you would see, even if you looked at construction costs of similar parks, what you're seeing is the cost to a contractor, what you would actually bid, go out to bid with. That's significantly less than what the numbers were quoting to you. So what we're quoting to you are numbers that include all your contingencies, all your sales tax, all your soft costs of administration permitting fees, SEPA fees, all of those sorts of elements are included in it. All of those soft costs add up to almost this, about 55, 65% of a construction cost. So we're, we're loading up those numbers to account for a real cost of a project and not just the cost to a contractor.
So if we did, so if we did nothing, and I'm not asking for an answer because it's too difficult to calculate this on the spot, but what I'm getting at is if we did nothing, maintain the fields, reseeded them, did minimum or whatever infrastructure is necessary to protect the environment, the bog, that would be a much different number. So it's just something to think about.
I have a few questions. First, appreciate all the work put into this. I may echo a few of the sentiments of a few of my fellow councilmembers. And I'm glad Councilmember Ross asked the question about the drainage costs. I had that on my list to ask. Considering this plan, we haven't heard about maintenance costs. In addition to the 16 to 20 million dollars it will be to construct the park, what are we looking at in addition on an annual basis for maintenance? Over and above, I guess, what our current maintenance costs are? Do we have any?
I can only speak to what we're currently expending for maintenance costs. So there's no way for us to quantify the staff time that's set aside for lining our fields or doing trash pickup, but for our purely landscape services and custodial contract, that's 21,000 that we spend every year.
So there, it would be more expensive because we're adding a few features to this, like the play area, the community garden, water costs to water it. Okay. I'm curious, through the course of the meetings, how many people said do nothing?
So I don't have the specific data to kind of show you a breakdown of those. I'd have to go back into the details of the files. There were, there were a significant number of people who said do nothing. And there were a significant number of people of those do nothing said do nothing but. And those, the but included all sorts of things. But can you improve the trails? Do nothing but can we, you know, but I'd really like to see XYZ. When you really, there's a lot of one-on-one conversations when I talked to a lot of people. I think there was a lot of people concerned about the cost of what you'd be spending in this park. There are a lot of people that just like the park as it is and a lot of people that equally recognize that, yeah, I love the park because I have the ability to come here when there's not a soccer game going on or I don't have people trying to throw a frisbee when the fields are being used. So a lot of the people that gave us the but something else were the people who wanted to come and just have a picnic and there's no place to do that when the fields are occupied. The people who wanted to be able to have, you know, some, some picnic shelters or other types of events. A lot of the other element I hear, that you heard in those meetings, the do nothing was a desire from the community. You'd also hear, we have the ability to have trails. We have picnic areas in other parts of our community. And that's because Kohani is a large homeowners association, has a lot of private facilities. They're not open to the public. And so you really, thinking about the context of what you heard and the people you were hearing from, you know, and how that relates to some of the larger needs and interests that we were also hearing. And that's where we really came up with that balance. We heard a lot of do nothing. We heard a lot of, we'd like to see something a little more than what we have. And so trying to balance those two was definitely one of the bigger challenges, I think, of the project as a whole.
Sure. I think one of the questions Councilmember Ross asked was the, the large fields in the word cloud, which is the overall sentiment of the community versus what was wanted from those who self-selected to participate in this process, which by and large is Kohani residents. 67% lived a mile or less away. And if you're talking about having a picnic, you live in Kohani because in all likelihood, because you're driving your car, because unless you live close enough where you can walk your picnic basket, because you're not going to come from outside. So just, it was 67% of the people that gave input are a mile or less. So I take that as most likely they are Kohani residents themselves. Relative to the trails, I do have a question. One of the dislikes that was listed was the fact that one of the trails along 32nd was getting pushed out further to the road. What, is it because the existing paved trail is in the buffer or why are we moving it out towards 32nd?
So that's this portion of the trail that we're showing in blue here. This is, would be a newly constructed trail. The existing trail actually cuts right next to the edge of the bog. You can almost see it in the shadow between the trees on the aerial.
The comments were about 32nd.
Oh.
Not down here, but up on the road. So that's why I was curious as to why we're moving that trail? Is it, is it in the buffer of the wetlands? Why are we moving it?
So that trail, we are not moving. What you might've been looking at was when we had three different alternatives for trails, some of those trails, some of those alternatives had some significant changes to the trail system. At the end of the day, we heard a lot of comments saying, we don't really want the trails to change. We like where they're at and we like them being away from the bog. So in the proposed, what we have now, we are not relocating that trail at all.
Okay. Maybe I misread that because one of the dislikes said that they would like it to be more separated like the other trails because it was pushed to the road edge. So.
There was a comment specifically along, a lot of discussion right at the 24th or 244th where it goes up to Beaver Lake, that that is pushed up next to the road. If there was any way to pull that off the road, that was a dislike that we did hear from those trails.
Gotcha. We talked a little bit about the soft surface trails and I appreciate that you left some of those in there. I'm curious as to how much you have in terms of distance.
I don't have a specific distance. What we, basically the only soft surface trail we have right now would be a newer soft surface trail closer to the improved park that we showed through this area here. The soft surface trails that existing right now actually all come into the buffer and pretty close to the bog. One of the comments we did here was that we'd like to have more soft surface trails that we're not currently showing. That's a comment that we could change in the master plan, but right now, we are removing those soft surface trails for just keeping the paved trail system around the outer edge of the bog. And the soft surface trail is a new trail that connects internal through the stormwater system and it connects along the, this far edge.
Okay. So one thing I heard as we sat up here at the dais was some concern about cost and I will share those concerns. 20, 16 to 20 million dollars is a lot to spend on what is being categorized up here as a neighborhood park. There's limited access and we're really rearranging the elements that are currently existing in the park without adding a lot to draw in any additional community members. And that does concern me considering the cost of it. I think when we originally set out on the master plan process to answer Councilmember Hornish's, we were looking at a wide variety of, of options there, including turf and lights and, and trying to garner that community sentiment that we need the fields, right? The big word bottle. What, what we ran into during the course of this part, of this process was that the residents of Kohani overwhelmingly came to the table because it's in their neighborhood and said, we don't like the idea of artificial lights. We don't like the idea of turf. And I think the council appreciated that sentiment and we wanted to be respectful of the neighborhood. But to simply do a little bit of rearranging for 20 million dollars because we embarked on this process, I, I have a little bit of indigestion about. Councilmember Stewart.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish.
Are we going into the deliberation now?
We certainly can.
She already started it. I didn't hear the gun go off.
I didn't hear a question there. So no.
No, I had questions in there. I was asking about the trails. How much?
I am not supportive of even spending the under $65,000 to pursue this project. I think it's, it's not worth the money, knowing that it's 20 million overall. There's a lot of unanswered questions. We don't have a number of percentages to do nothing. We don't know really if the 12 or 15. I really question the 12 to 15 million to repair the current ground fields. I can't, I can't fathom that it's even half that amount. I'm sorry. But I will tell you that if you come back and show me estimates, I will reconsider that.
Oh, your mic's still on.
Your mic's still on.
Start over.
Do over.
No, I'm not supportive.
But I question the information that we don't have. We say some point we'll have to redo these fields and it's going to cost 12 to 15 million. It feels like that number and that time period is uncertain. The number 12 to 15 is pulled out of thin air. I will listen if you have substantiation to show me that it would cost 12 or 15. I just can't fathom it would cost 12 to 15 million to reseed and do some stormwater maintenance to these fields. I just can't fathom that. It doesn't make sense. We spent a million dollars reseeding Skyline with artificial turf. We're talking about natural turf here. It shouldn't cost anywhere near the magnitude of 12 to 15 million. I, I just can't accept it. But I will listen if you give me something to substantiate the 12 to 15 million, but not to just to say it's going to cost 12 to 15 when that seems unreasonable to me. So I am not supportive of this and I will not be part of the consensus to move forward to even spend the 169 to do the SEPA.
Councilmember Hornish, or excuse me, Councilmember Valdroma.
As I mentioned earlier, I have similar concerns. I'm concerned that basically as we've now been depicting this, this is a neighborhood park that they're trying to keep as a neighborhood park. And for 20 million dollars, we're not going to have any more intensive activity taking place, which is what we began with, with the ideas, as was mentioned, of light, artificial first, fields and that. That's not happening here. So what do we get for the 20 million dollars? Are some picnic tables and rest areas that will be primarily utilized by a small subsection of our city? I did a quick back of the envelope number and found that for 20 million dollars, we can take the entire city 31 times to mods. So the entire city. So the entire city could go to mods for 31 times. That's programmable space. If we go to Tenor's, it drops to 20-some. But any case, on that side, we're not getting the bang for the buck here. It's not the intended purpose. I'm opposed to how this is being proposed to us. Frankly, for this, we might as well look at turning it into a neighborhood park. I mean, that was discussed previously before it came into the city from prior councils, and letting Kohani fund their own project and just turn it over to them to run it. I mean, they've raised that issue a number of times. Let's consider that instead of trying to put this magnitude. And frankly, 20 million, and then the other 12 or 15, I'm sure we'll spend 12 to 15. We always seem to gold-plate things. 35 million is just outrageous. I can't phantom the 20 million with not getting another kid on there. And even though there have been some small usage by other parts, I say, this has been primarily used by Kohani. It will continue to be primarily used by Kohani. I'm not going to spend 20 million dollars of the city's taxpayers' money for a couple picnic tables and keeping things basically the same way it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah. If cost was not a factor, this is a good plan, but it is. And we find, I find very little expansion of the rec use. I see a nominal increase in parking. I've heard from the prior testimony, I think it was in June, one homeowner after another, and Kohani said, leave as is. So do nothing. And then Kohani wants a small field, so they really don't care about expanding usage of the fields either. And we listened to Kohani residents about not adding lights and astroturf. So I respect that. Shifting to the pro plan, fields are big, are a big concern in our community. And I absolutely do not support a penny to go into this master plan, whether it's SEPA, any study, design, anything. We need to look, I think we need to complete the athletic study. I think we need to look at the athletic study on a key eye on how we expand access and quantity of hours of field use for the community. So I absolutely don't support this, and I think we need to really study how we can maximize usage of our parks that exist and not nominal polishing a park that's mostly used by one segment in the area.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Thank you both for putting this together. I'm one of those Kohani residents, so I think it's great, and I think what you've put together is an outstanding, you listened. That's the best compliment I can give you. You listened to those of us that came to the open houses, and I think that this is an incredible improvement on what's there, and something does need to be done. My view on this is, I have some concerns about costs, for sure, but when we talk about, other voices up here have talked about access to play fields, or ball fields, or sports fields. More to Angie, can you tell me, I have just three quick questions about Big Rock? I think I have this right here, that we currently have Big Rock Site C open. Is that accurate?
No.
Site, okay. Site A is open currently, right? Okay. So what is the outstanding cost of opening Big Rock B?
So Big Rock B has an allocation of about 3.4 million to open, to do the improvements and open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that include, would there be space in that area? Let me rephrase the question. Were Big Rock B opened, is there space, or are there encumbrances based upon the Mary Piggott and the gift that would stop us from adding any kind of sports fields to that?
Absolutely. The conditions of her donation is no active recreation.
No active, okay.
Right.
So 3.5 million opens Big Rock B, roughly. And is the gift of Big Rock C, I guess, is that contingent upon opening Big Rock B?
It's not a condition that she has set upon the city.
Okay.
No.
Okay. So while I appreciate that Kohani, I kind of go back to my original thing about the 64 acres versus 10, roughly. It is a neighborhood park, used a lot by the neighbors. It does have existing sports fields. Could they be improved? Yes. Maybe a scaled-down version of this that improves the ball fields differently might be a good, if we're going to step back, I don't know how we're all going to vote here, but there is a need for ball fields. They can't go in Big Rock. I look at Big Rock as, like, on the opposing side of this whole issue about parks. We have this gifted park that's sitting out there that we're not utilizing for 3.5 million dollars. And though that's a lot of money, when it's put up against the 15 to 20 million dollars of improvements that are on the preferred plan, that seems like a pretty good bargain to me. So thank you for your time, and I really thank you for the proposal. And I think there's a lot of information here that we're going to be looking at for the next few years, for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. So one of the things I think we really, as a council, should consider is the trail work. I think that we really need to look at potentially moving those unofficial trails away from the bog. I think protecting the bog really has to be, as a city and as the council, that really, I mean, if I recall, there are only a handful of these kind of bogs in the entire world, right, of this age. And so I feel like we have a really big responsibility to protect this bog. And so I would like just to consider the trail work to make sure that we can respect that buffer and remove those trails that are encroaching upon the bog. It sounds like, you know, there are some concerns with the cost. I think one of the pieces of information that maybe we need to have is, what are the environmental impacts of us not doing the stormwater work? And I don't know if that's where we need the SEPA review to help us understand that, but I think we, again, as a responsibility of being the caretakers of this bog, we need to understand what negative impacts may happen if we don't do the improvements to the stormwater. And if I understood it correctly, by not improving the fields, we actually will use more water than once we make the field improvements. Is that correct? Okay. So I just want to understand from an environmental standpoint, what are the pros and cons of not, you know, if we don't do anything, is that really, in the long term, going to be more of a negative? So I think that would be important. But I would like to see us move forward at a minimum with the trail work, because I really just think that our responsibility, if anything happens to this bog, it just, we can't replace it. It's not something we can fix later, so.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I look at what we spent on 4th Street, Southeast 4th, at 21 million. And in my mind, I try to equate 20 million here, and then I look at 21 million on Southeast 4th. And I'm having a real tough time with that one, because if we really consider this to be a neighborhood park, then to spend 21 million on a neighborhood park, or 20 million on a neighborhood park is just really hard. I think what we need to do is perhaps we need to take a step back and remember what was the intent. The intent was, we were short on fields. We thought that would be the place to put them. It was city space. I think we need to go back and have the discussion with Kohani, because I don't think Kohani wants it to be a city park, perhaps. I think they really want a neighborhood park. And if that's really where that discussion leads, then maybe, you know, we look at the fact that maybe Kohani should have it as a neighborhood park, and they should take that park and have that space. Because it's hard for me, in my mind, to be spending city tax dollars on a park that is being utilized and to spend that kind of money on a neighborhood park. I think you guys did an amazing job going from what had come out for the first version for that park, and then to have to go out there and go against a campaign of save our neighborhood park, and into just that whole big thing out there all summer long, and then come back with this. You guys had just nowhere to go. So you guys did an amazing job. So accolades to you for that. I mean, you just really, there was no place you could go. But if I have to sit here and look at what to do with tax dollars, this is not where I could spend them. It just wouldn't be a good use of tax dollars to spend that kind of money in a park that is calling for everybody, you know, 70% of the people wanting it to remain a neighborhood park. And I think that what this is begging for is for the long discussion with Kohani. And do they want us to be, do they want us to be in there? Are they okay with this being a city park? Because if it is, then we need to go back to the drawing board and go, this is what we're there for. And you know what? The ball fields need to be number one, and that's where we should be spending the money first.
So I just want to reiterate that I think, you know, we all appreciate the work you guys did on it, and I think the long and short of it is that we truly did set out on this adventure with the fields in mind, right? That's why we came up with the astroturf and the lights. And then the campaign that the deputy mayor was just, it narrowed our focus, and it's where we landed now. So the good news about the work that's been done is that it's shelf-ready. We could pull it off at any point in time in the future if we needed to. I'd be willing to understand the impact of the trails, though I've been on those trails fairly. They're fairly overgrown, which tells me they're not utilized very often. And so I suspect their impact on the bog is pretty minimal, but I'd be certainly willing to look at it and find out if the trails is something in the future we want to consider, you know, from a cost perspective. But my guess is you don't have this broken down by, here's what it would cost to decommission these trails.
She has that. 1 to 2 million.
She gave, well, she said it was for the trails, but that wasn't just to decommission the trails that are right there. That was all of the trails, was my understanding.
That was all of the trails, but we do have detailed cost breakdowns. We could come back with some more of that information.
Yeah. I think that might be appropriate for later, but yeah, for the reasons that have already been stated up here, I don't support going forward, spending money when our goal was to put fields here. And really, we're not doing anything but making some small improvements, and I think maybe we might want to take a second swing at this in the future to figure out what we want to do with the park. Councilmember Stewart.
Do we need a motion to give you formal direction?
Yes. I was going to respectfully request. We were, before you, asking to proceed with this plan, and then we could move into the SEPA process, and then it would come back after the first of the year as a formal adoption. But I'm getting the indications that that's not where the council wants to go. So I guess for us as staff, we would kind of like to know next steps. Is there more information you'd like to have? Should we pause it now? Should we wait for the athletic field study to be completed to give us more information about this if we really want to go back and take a hard look at artificial turf and lights? So if we could get a little bit of direction tonight, that would be helpful, if you want to just pause it.
So I would like to move that we get the detailed information on the trail work around the bog. I think that's, again, really critical, I think, protecting the bog. In addition to, so I'd like to move that we get the detailed information on what it would take to do the trails around the bog, the detailed information on the negative, what negative impacts may be occurring by not doing any work. And with that, if there is any work that you would recommend from an environmentally protecting the bog that we would need to do more immediately. So I'd like to move that those be the next steps. And that, I guess, is the third component, that we wait to discuss this further after you complete the athletic field study.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak to your motion, or you feel like you did already?
I mean, I think it's fairly clear. I think all the council members have already said, I think you guys did a great job. There was a lot of input in multiple directions, and I think this is a great plan. I think because of the high price tag, it's a little bit shocking for folks, but I think protecting the bog and the environment and understanding the field impacts and things like that will be great information that we can look at the first part of next year, the first half of next year, to figure out what we should do going forward, so.
Councilmember Valderrama.
While I appreciate the intention of the motion, and I've had kids who have run Cost Country, I didn't, I did triathlon instead, I'm concerned that this project does not reflect what the council wanted, and I think we're going to be continuing to go the direction. I think we need a whole reset and decide back, are we going to do a city project on this park and its issues? Or is this a neighborhood project, which has different consequences and repercussions that we should look at before we start looking at the trails and that, and investing into something that's going to continue to be a neighborhood project? And then they're going to have issues about, well, we don't want Eastside Catholic, or Eastlake, or Skyline kids running on it. So I think there's some fundamental questions that have to now be answered and a reset, so I would be opposed to the motion.
Can I clarify something for him, because I think he misunderstood my motion?
Just push your button, and I've got the motion written down. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'll defer to Councilmember Stewart, so she can answer the question or clarify her motion.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. So just to be clear, that my motion was not to add any trails, but to potentially remove the trails that are encroaching upon the bog. So it wasn't to add any trails, to invite Eastside Catholic or Eastlake to come and run around here. And it wasn't to address the trails around the park. It was strictly around the things we need to do to protect the bog.
Understood.
Okay.
Councilmember Ross.
Do we really need a motion? I think we just need to kind of give a general direction, and I think what we're touching on, in my mind, is that we effectively shelved this project. I don't think we're going to pursue this project master plan, but what's being raised by Councilmember Stewart indirectly, and I agree with her on that, is that we should be looking in the context of preserving our environment, so the bog and other sensitive areas. So if there's any drainage issues that need to be addressed, we should always be looking at that, just for regular maintenance of our parks. And additionally, any safety issues with the condition of the fields. But beyond that, I don't think we should be pursuing a master plan or revisiting that. I think we do need to fast-forward to the athletic study and really address the field, field access issue that we're, need for our community is being demanded.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I agree with both Councilmember Ross and Councilmember Stewart in this case, but I do think that the motion does hold, is needed, because it does provide the direction that we're trying to give the consultant and staff and directors, directors, to try to give us some sort of, what are we going to get next here? And to my understanding of the motion, please correct me if I'm wrong, some information on trails, some information on athletic fields, a survey on the fields, and then overall in the city. And then the third part was the drainage issue, the stormwater drainage. Those are the three things I heard in the motion, I think. And I think those three things coming out of this, it is a pivot away from this master plan, but it does take three points personally that I support, that I'd like more information on in the next few months, potentially. You know, you said 2020 for the parks, the field study, but whatever. I mean, we want to give you some direction. So I support the motion because it does provide some direction so that you can come back to us with those three points that I would like more information on. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I was going to say something about the motion, but I might be misunderstanding the motion. Could you please repeat?
I would like to repeat it, because I wrote it down as she stated it. She wants more detailed information on the trails around the bog, detailed information on the negative impacts, and the recommended work on protecting the bog.
Does that mean the negative impacts on the trails in the bog?
I think she means the negative impacts of the trails on the bog. That's how I took it. Okay. Councilmember Hornish.
I'm actually supportive of the motion, but not at this time, because I think if we wait for the athletic study and we decide we really need more fields, and we're going to put it in this city park, if it is a city park and not a neighborhood park, then it comes back at that point. So I appreciate the environmental focus, but not at this time.
So I wrote down what you said, so if there's more to it, you can, she can pull it back up.
Can I? Well, she just weighed in, because what I had is that at the end of all those other things, she said, and wait until the athletic field study is completed.
But that was the third, right? So it was the trails around the bog, the drainage issue of the fields, and the negative impacts of that on the bog, and completing the athletic study, that those were the next, the three next steps.
So I'm not sure I understand your motion at all anymore, because the athletic field study, Angie, you said it's supposed to be done next year? study, Angie, you said it's supposed to be done next year?
First part. We're actually in process right now.
Okay, but completed next year?
So I'd say first quarter of next year. We're hoping to wrap that up.
So, okay, so I guess my confusion lies in directing, back to Councilmember Hornish's point, directing staff to do work, especially because my concern, namely, and I appreciate the nature of the motion as well, on the impacts to the bog, but my concern without understanding is the negative impacts on the bog and what that looks like from a workload perspective on staff, certainly something that's not on their work plan, and understanding whether, what that entails for staff as far as time, or, I mean, are you going to have to bring a consultant in to do that? What does that look like for you?
My interpretation of that is kind of, what if we don't do anything to the fields right now? What is, what's happening with the fields? Are they leaching into the bog? What if we don't do anything with the fields? How long until that field completely fails? That type of information, which will also be generated out of the athletic field study. That was my understanding of what I believe Councilmember Stewart was trying to express.
Okay. So I won't be supporting the motion, only because I want to wait for that athletic fields. And then I think it's inappropriate, once we have that in hand, to direct staff on this. Councilmember Stewart.
So I'd just like to clarify it once again, and maybe we can't handle multi-step motions, but my motion was to get three pieces of information. What impact does, do the trails around the bog, just the trails around the bog, what negative impact do those have, and what would it take to rectify that? That was one. Two was, what negative impacts are there to the bog if we don't do any improvements to the fields? And three was to complete the athletic field study before we move forward with doing anything to the park in terms of the master plan, moving anything or anything like that around. So those were the three things in my motion, the three next steps, because that's what you asked for, were clear next steps.
No confusion. Okay. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I won't be supporting this motion, but I just wanted to state that I do agree that I think the timing is just wrong on this, because this is due back, the study, the field studies due back first quarter.
Yes. Yeah, we're in process on that right now, about halfway through, and we could put up this on hold until the athletic field study is done. We'd have more information about the questions about demand on all of our field facilities throughout the city, and would this help resolve some of the issues we have with demand and need?
Yeah, because then comes to the question, begs the question of, before we spend money in Kohani, we need to have, be having a discussion with Kohani, at least in my mind.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, from some of the previous recent statements, the athletic field study is going to provide a lot of information that we need, that will drive out some of the issues that we're concerned about, whether it be environmental or safety. So I will not support the motion as is. Simply put, we should perform the continued working, the athletic field study, and review the results of that, and figure out what the next steps are.
Okay, I have no more lights on. So we are now voting on the motion, which has been repeated several times. Hopefully, everyone has it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the nays have it, 5-2 vote, 2-5. Okay.
Resus?
Well, I don't know that we've given them any direction.
So I think we did, because what they were requesting was consensus on the preferred master plan. I think they got that, unless you want to take a formal vote on it.
I think we should take a formal vote.
Okay, we can take a formal vote on it if you'd like.
It should be clear.
Okay, go ahead, make a motion.
I made a motion and...
I'd like to make a motion, please, that we provide consensus based upon the master plan, preferred master plan that's presented this evening.
I don't understand that. Does that mean, do you support it or not?
I'm not talking about whether or not I support. We didn't, we discussed any motion.
We need a motion in the affirmative to, you have to state your motion in the affirmative to adopt the master plan, I think is what you can, they're looking...
I would like to re, okay, then I move that we do not adopt the preferred master plan then.
Can you state your, can you state it in the negative? Okay, yes, you can. Okay, to not adopt the master plan. Okay, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Seconded, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by vote of 7-0, we are not approving the master plan. That means number two is taken care of, and so is number three. Okay?
So my understanding for directions of staff is to complete the athletic field study, bring back the information related to this project, and then proceed from there based on council's direction at that time.
That's what I heard.
Can I make another motion?
I can't make a motion.
I would like, I would like to make a motion that in addition to the field study, that we get information on the impacts, the negative impacts of the trails around the bog.
Related to the earlier motion?
It's the same motion.
It's not the same motion.
Fairly similar, but slightly different.
It's not the same. I just want to get the information about, it's not the same motion.
I'm going to be here all night.
Okay, I don't have any other lights on, and I don't have a second, so.
Can I have a restatement of the motion, please?
I would like, I move that we ask staff to bring us back the information on the negative impacts of the trails around the bog and what it would cost to rectify that.
In their current state.
In the current state. It's not making any improvements. It has nothing to do with the fields or the, any of the master plan work that's around the fields or the playground. It's just about getting information about the trails around the bog.
I'll second, but I have a question.
I have a point of order.
State your point.
I'd like a ruling as to whether or not that's the same motion that was denied before.
It's slightly different, I would say, only because it could have been amended to remove some of what was in it. So it's pretty similar, but slightly different.
Call the questions?
No, Councilmember Ritchie.
So, sorry. Hey, Angie. Quick question for you, sorry. Hey, sorry to interrupt. So Councilmember Stewart's raised a motion that I seconded regarding providing some information, giving you some direction would be the affirmative in the motion, to give us information about the, I believe, Councilmember Stewart, correct me if I'm wrong, about the environmental impact, I'm assuming, on the bog.
Correct.
On, of the existing trail system that's there right now. Is there, is that information something you can get? It looks like we just cleared off a significant portion of your workload by what we just did. So I guess I'm asking, is that something, I'd rather not create a problem, is that something, is that information accessible? Is that something you can obtain? Maybe the consultant can help? I don't know. Is there a cost associated with that? I'm trying to...
So let me, let me put a piece of information on the table that will maybe help this considerably. The first thing that we would have brought back about this information about the trails and the impact on the bog is that trails are not allowed within the buffer of the bog, which is 215 feet, all right? So 250 feet from the edge, 15 feet from the edge of the bog, trails are not allowed except from the outer 25%. So when you map that out, that does eliminate quite a bit of the trails that are too close to the bog as is. So technically, there are trails in there that should not be in there right now.
Okay.
So that would eliminate a majority of those trails that are close to the bog.
So I think what the, again, I'm trying to understand the motion, so to decide if I'm going to support or not. I think what would help me coming out of that, why would be supported, is if we knew the cost of removing those trails, or what the impact is of having those trails there, I don't know if there's a way to say it's doing X or Y to the bog, but were we to remove those trails, what would that cost? Because I think we all, I believe there's consensus on trying to protect the bog up here. So if we're, if that is a primary, if there are currently trails within that 215-foot boundary, I'd like to know what the cost would be to remove them.
Okay. So that sounds like something different, though, than what I heard about the environmental impacts of the trails near the bog. So I'm hearing two different things. We can bring forward projected costs to decommission trails that are not allowed in the current buffer. That's pretty straightforward and pretty easy to do. Environmental impacts of trails in the bog buffer are a different conversation.
Yeah, how do you figure that out? I guess that's my question. I mean, there's a number associated with getting rid of the trails that are within 215 feet, but I guess that's one question about the motion from Councilmember Stewart, is how do you actually, is there a way to know what the environmental impact is of those trails? How do you, what does that look like? How do you, you know, qualify that?
Well, I guess the question might be turned back to Councilmember Stewart to say, what do you mean by environmental impact? If we eliminate the trails within that 75% of the bog anyway, that is going to mitigate or take care of any...
Well, I guess the challenge here is that we haven't said we're going to do that. So maybe I have a different question, which is if there are no trails allowed within 215 feet of the bog, and there are trails there now, shouldn't we remove them? And do you really even need council direction to do that?
That's a capital project that we would need to get funding for. We'd have to put that in the CIP.
Okay, then I think that's what I'm looking at, is we shouldn't have those trails in that buffer. So that's what I'm trying to get at. So my motion was to understand what the impact was, because I'm assuming if there's going to be an expenditure, then someone's going to ask, well, if it costs X to do it, then, you know, maybe we shouldn't do it, so we need the information. So if that's not the right information to obtain, do you have a recommendation on what information we do need to have to consider doing that work?
Right. So we can bring back that information when we bring back the information of the athletic field study, right? Kind of an update to this project, athletic field study information, and identify the trails that are existing in that 75% of the buffer that should not be there, and what it would cost to remove those and decommission those.
That would be awesome.
That's what we can do.
That would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
I'm good.
Okay. I was busy scribbling while Angie was probably saying something important, so I'm sorry. But I was going to say, can they, you said you have the information about decommissioning the trails. This is a simple dollar figure. I'm thinking this is not, like, complex.
Right, we do have numbers broken down. There's a little bit of effort to separate it, but not a huge amount of effort, just to provide the cost of removing and restoring native plants in those areas. The environmental impacts and what exactly does it, what exactly is detrimental to the bog by having those trails, that's a more complicated and nuanced discussion.
Then I'm happy to withdraw my motion, given that Angie has already said they can bring us the information on what it would cost to remove the trails that shouldn't be there anyway.
Wonderful. Okay. So then, quick, let's take a break, and then we'll come back.
And I am a transportation planner with the Department of Public Works. To my left is Rory Kirkpatrick, our intern, who's going to be helping us with our presentation Melanie, would you mind switching over the screen, please? Thank you. Tonight, we have a summary of our transportation master plan, community outreach that we've been doing since July, which is when we were last in front of council, getting direction on the outreach plan. So we have a few topics tonight, again, going over our outreach summary. We're going to weave in answers to some of the council questions we've received along the way, and then we'll briefly talk about next steps. So community outreach is integral to the success of the TMP, and understanding community priorities, particularly around transportation, is a really important part of how we build our TMP. For instance, we want to address key topics with the members of the public, whether that's congestion, or connectivity, or transit. And the input that we get from the public really helps to inform a variety of things, including what the TMP actually looks like, but also program and policy updates, and then the prioritized project list, which will be a topic we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation. You'll recognize this slide from July, and this was really where we wanted to kind of build a really robust outreach plan and allow for a multitude of opportunities for members of the public to participate in the TMP, understanding that there are a variety of methods that work better for some and others for other groups of people. So as you'll see here, we built kind of this five-pronged approach. We wanted to do a really good statistically valid survey, which, again, we'll get into more detail on later. We wanted to build a really solid online engagement platform. We wanted to make sure that we use more traditional methods, like in-person meetings, so that's workshops, stakeholder meetings, small group meetings, one-on-one meetings. And that really helps us to build a relationship with the community. We also wanted to do more innovative tools, such as the meeting in a box. And then we're also tabling at certain community events. The idea there is that we would go to where people already were, so that people didn't have to come to us. So again, we'll go into more detail on all those points a little bit later, but I wanted to turn it over to Rory to go over a few kind of high-level takeaways on the accomplishments that we've had over the past five or so months.
The TMP project team engaged 395 people in person through a variety of settings. These include the three workshops, four pop-ups, 19 small group meetings, and two completed meetings in a box. The TMP had 143 engaged users online through Kynex Mamish. The users who engaged are those who participated in the site's tools, such as the online mapping exercise and quick polls. The TMP project team recorded 1,313 votes from the project prioritization exercise via workshops, online, small group meetings, and meetings in a box. The TMP project team mailed statistically valid surveys to a random sample of 3,000 and received 687 completed surveys, giving a response rate of 23%. Typical response rates to a broad resident survey generally range from 12% to 30%, so this is a relatively high response rate.
So again, getting back to the ways that we engage with the community, Rory hit on the statistically valid survey. We've got preliminary results on that. They came right before Thanksgiving, and we're still looking at them. We're still providing comments back to our consultant who did that. So we're hoping to have results in a final format at the early part of next year, and we will definitely share that with council in a report. I mentioned the online engagement, and Rory touched on it in our accomplishments. Kynex Mamish was our platform, our new platform that we established, particularly for the TMP, but also for other city projects. That was, and is becoming increasingly more vital to outreach efforts, to reach people that we otherwise would not be able to reach in person. So the idea there is that we're broadening our outreach, we are reducing barriers for people to participate, and we're allowing for more two-way communication, so that we can push out information, but also the community can provide feedback to us. And that was a really good platform to just hear from residents in a different manner and understand the issues in a little bit more of a direct way. I touched on the in-person meetings already, and those were primarily the workshops, but also a lot of small group meetings, where we made a really concerted effort to reach out to stakeholders in the community, whether that be faith groups, schools, school districts, community service organizations, and the like. Those are really important for, again, building relationships with our community, so that we can understand all the perspectives that are out there. One note I want to make here about the workshops in particular is we did have a couple of questions from council about a few things. So one of the questions was about holding the workshops in August, and the concern about that being in the summertime, and potentially maybe missing out on some people. And so that's a well-received comment. We primarily did that because we wanted to adhere to our schedule as best as we could. That was really with an eye toward adopting the plan at the end of next year. We had to get these done in the summertime, and it just so happened that August was the best month. We do understand that there are complications with doing outreach events in the summertime, but we also felt like, and at least in my experience, every month has something that conflicts with some groups of people. So at the end of the day, we had to adhere to the schedule, and August was the month. The good thing about the approach that we took was that, because we had such a robust and comprehensive way of reaching out to the community, if you couldn't make it in-person at a workshop, you could go online and participate in almost the exact same exercise. And it really, again, just helped to capture all the people, even if they couldn't make an in-person meeting. Another comment that was brought up by council was, in the workshops, the exercise, kind of the focal point of the workshops, not including cost information for all the projects. And maybe taking a step back, the exercise that we presented to the public was basically outlining potential projects that the city could undertake under the TMP and getting a sense of priorities from the community. So the reason why cost was not a criteria in that is because cost is actually a tricky criteria to have, because it's hard to tell if a high cost is a good thing or a bad thing, and if a low cost is a good thing or a bad thing, and is it some mix of the two. When you talk about small projects, like, say, improving an intersection with four-way stop, that might be a cheap project, but it could be very impactful. So we don't want to lose sight of that and have cost infiltrate and get too weighty over the prioritization process. So the, I will say, though, that cost will be a main feature of our So I will say, though, that cost will be a main feature of our next step, which is the prioritized project list. So we will have cost related to that, and that will be a more in-depth discussion with council. But we did feel that with cost, it is, again, kind of tricky. Another piece of that is that in our workshops, we did allow people to write in project ideas. So the idea there was that we came with a set of ideas for projects, but we also wanted to hear from community members, specific areas that they felt were important. So we had actually quite a bit of write-in projects over 100, and they were really good. A lot of them were really good ideas. And the trick there is if we had write-in projects that didn't have cost associated with them, but projects that did have cost associated with them, it would be sort of an unbalanced way to compare those projects across the board. So just wanted to make those two notes there. So progressing on this slide to the meeting in a box, that was a really innovative tool. I think we were all really excited about that. We really pushed it, and we marketed it really heavily, but we only got about four people to request a meeting in a box, which was not too bad. I'd say that's pretty successful, but at the end of the day, only two of those were completed. So, you know, lesson learned, but it was just a great way to, again, kind of learn about innovative tools for engaging the community. And then our final piece up there is the pop-up events. So we were at Party on the Plateau, we were at farmers' markets, and we were also at National Night Out. And again, the idea there is going to where people already were. We engaged a lot of people in these events, and they were actually really, really good events for us to just generate interest. We did these before the workshops so that we could hand out flyers and really market the workshops and participation on Connect Sumamish. There was a question about some of the questions we were asking at those pop-up events. We had what we called quick polls, and a poll is really just one question with a multiple choice option, definitely not a survey, because I think that was some confusion, that is this a poll or a survey? We viewed the survey, again, with a statistically valid survey of more in-depth questions across a broad topic with different types of questions, whereas the poll was really meant to generate interest in the TMP, really get the community thinking about trade-offs that the city has to make. So, for instance, each of the pop-up events had a different quick poll question, and, for example, one of those questions was in regard to transit, if the community preferred to have better coverage in the city or more efficient routes on the routes that already exist. And so that was just a way to kind of understand, real high-level, not scientific, but just understand where the community kind of was thinking and just get them excited about the TMP and topics under the TMP, but also understand that there are trade-offs inherent in transportation planning. So just wanted to hit on those topics before I get into our next set of slides here. And really, tonight, I wanted to focus on the two big bulky parts of the outreach where we engaged the most people, and that would be the online effort and our in-person meetings. So in the in-person meetings, again, the workshops, we had an introductory presentation to really set the foundation for the TMP. We understand that when people engage on topics, particularly some that are technical in nature and really complex, we need to set the foundation so that people can interact in a way that's productive for both parties. So we had a really good presentation for that, and that's actually outlined in the appendix of the Exhibit 1 in your agenda packet. You can see more detail on that in there. And then after the presentation, we really shifted into the interactive exercise, and that was, as I mentioned earlier, about the city having project posters up for projects that, for each type of mode of travel, whether that's by car, by bike, by walking, by transit, or what we call the connectivity projects, which are generally speaking barricade projects. And so each member of the public was able to review the information, review the projects, talk to staff members who were stationed at the posters, and then vote with a dot budget that we gave each attendee. Each attendee got 10 dots to support a project and then one dot to show us that they opposed a project. And so then they could allocate their dots as they saw fit, and then we used that input and recorded it precisely in our input tracker, which is Appendix E in Exhibit 1. And then the good thing about this setup was that there was a lot of interaction between staff and the public. There was a lot of good questions, a lot of really good discussion during these events, and we learned a lot. We also met a lot of people, and that was just, it's, again, really good for us to get a better sense of the community priorities. We also used the workshops as a way to promote other tools. As I mentioned, we did a lot of heavy marketing for a meeting in a box. And then we also wanted to get people excited about meeting in small groups with their organizations or schools or friends with staff. And so the stakeholder meetings is kind of a second piece of this in-person idea, and that was really us kind of taking the lead and trying to reach out to organizations and really hear perspectives from organizations and community leaders that might have a vested interest in transportation in Sumamish. So, for instance, we met with Eastside Friends of Seniors, who really serve a transportation purpose for the senior population in Sumamish. We also met with faith groups, schools, and school districts, and I'll give you some of our takeaways in a couple of slides here, but those were really meant to, again, just re-engage our community and get that relationship building going further down the path. We also used that as an opportunity to get those organizations to disseminate information to their groups. So in certain cases, like, for instance, schools, we've found that almost all the schools had a weekly newsletter, so we got our information put into those newsletters and disseminated to the parents. That drove participation online, and it also drove discussions with staff directly. Online engagement, again, we've hit on this a couple of times, but just some more details here. We had the quick polls available on Connect Sumamish. We also had a Q&amp;A tool, which was great because people could go online and say, hey, I don't know anything about the TMP. Tell me about the TMP. Or they could say, hey, what's going on with this intersection next to my house? They could really span the spectrum of questions, and we had some really good thought-provoking conversations through that. And all the questions and the answers were posted for the public to see, so it was transparent in that way. We also had a newsfeed tool, which allowed us to kind of continuously update the community on what was happening. It was a little bit marketing, but also a little bit reporting back to the community, and we're still updating that today. And then, of course, the mapping exercise, which really mirrored exactly the exercise that was done in person at the workshops, and that really got us some more input from the community in a direct way on the projects. Now, online engagement is about as good as your marketing effort, so we really hit the social media hard. Luckily, we had Rory to help us. She's really good with social media campaigns, so she developed TMP Thursdays and Transportation Tuesdays, so we would tweet about these things, and we'd post on Facebook, and then we would link to Connect Sumamish to really, again, generate interest in the TMP and also drive participation. We also use our e-newsletter quite a bit. I think between July and October, we were in almost every newsletter, and that, again, drove a lot of participation. So it was about keeping it at the front of everyone's mind. We had something called the Open Participation Survey, which is related to our statistically valid survey, except that it was not a random sample. So it was the exact same questions that were issued on the statistically valid survey, but anybody could take that. So we marketed that really heavily as well, and that got some good response. We had about 150, I think, responses on that survey, and people were able to write in projects and tell us what they thought about projects as well. And then we also managed a project email address. So we set up tmp@sumamish.us, and I manage that. I checked it twice a day, even through today, and that was a direct channel for people to get information about the TMP, and we included that email address on everything that we had. So we got a lot of questions there, a lot of comments, a lot of good feedback there as well. And again, this is kind of just all-encompassing, trying to leave no stone unturned. So these are the really important takeaways. So what did we learn out of all this? We almost had a good problem in the sense that we had so much data to sift through that it was a little bit overwhelming, but really, there's some good high-level takeaways that came of that. And one of them, I'll just kind of walk through all these. So connectivity is still a major issue in Sumamish, and that is really both sides of the issue. So there are, as you know, barricades throughout the city, there are roads that don't connect, there are a lot of cul-de-sacs in Sumamish, and that was a topic that really resonated with a lot of people. People are very passionate about the connectivity issues, and again, that's not saying one side is more passionate than the other. It's all sides of the issue are very passionate. So the thing that we noticed about the connectivity issue is that it really did drive a lot of participation, whether that was in-person at the workshops or online. So we definitely wanted to highlight that for the council. We met directly with both Issaquah and Lake Washington School Districts, had really good conversations with them, and then we also met with schools in Sumamish that we knew had pre-existing traffic issues. So we reached out to a whole bunch of schools and met with most of them. So we met with Sunny Hills, Skyline, Eastlake, Eastside Catholic, the whole spectrum of schools in Sumamish, and got really good feedback from all those groups. And really, what we took away from that was that they all had pretty similar concerns. They really were concerned about pedestrian safety, connectivity, particularly as it related to school buses, whether that be just the length of school bus routes or just getting more people to use the school buses. We also heard particularly pointed concerns about just enrollment implications related to growth. So they are keenly aware of being able to serve the populations that we have and the facilities that are existing. There was a good conversation about construction impacts and just having better communication about when construction impacts are happening and what we can do to get ahead of those, particularly as they relate to buses and those routes. And then, of course, congestion at key intersections. So when we met with each school, almost inevitably, they would say, well, the intersection at our entrance is the most important intersection in the city, so, you know, that's obvious. But again, good to hear that input directly from the organizations. This one might elicit some chuckles from the audience, but congestion on arterioses is a major concern. So we all know that. That is not lost on anyone. But the interesting takeaway here is that the conversations were diverse, and they spanned the whole spectrum of issues. So it was as much about traffic as it was about demand, about operations, about building more and better roads, connectivity, growth, and transit. It covered everything, and it wasn't one that was more than the other. It was pretty even across all those. And that's really important for us to understand because, again, these are really complex issues that some solutions might work better in certain areas of the city, but they're all related to the same congestion issue. We also heard quite a bit about transit, and interestingly enough, transit was one of the highest write-in project categories, so a lot of people had a lot of ideas about transit. And really, what it boils down to is that residents want a better way to get around, to commute, more efficient bus routes, but also bus shelters, pathways getting to bus stops, lighting, all the safety elements of waiting for a bus. So those are not, again, not lost on us, and this is really important because it helps inform how we interact with metro and sound transit. We are not a transit agency, but we do have conversations regularly with those agencies. And this is, again, just really important to have firm data to use to talk to those agencies. And this, again, may be an obvious point, but there is a lot of concern about the pace of growth and the perception that infrastructure is not keeping pace with growth. So residents, this, again, boils down to just being concerned that there's all these cars on the road, and we're not doing enough to help alleviate that congestion. We'll get into this a little bit more, but one of the best ways we can do that under the TMP is really talk about the prioritized project list. That is the meat of the TMP, and that's where we should spend a lot of our effort in building a really good plan for addressing through capital the projects that will have the biggest bang for the buck. And then finally here is residents do want options to walk and bike throughout Sumamish. I know that this tends to be kind of a polarizing issue as well, but we heard from a lot of different groups that, whether they were seniors or school-aged children that said, hey, I want to walk. I want to walk more. We have all these sidewalk gaps throughout the city, and sometimes it's a sidewalk, sometimes it's crushed gravel, sometimes it's nothing or a shoulder, and I want to feel safe when I'm walking in my neighborhood. So that is something that we definitely took away in this effort, that we are a car-dependent community, but there is interest in walking and biking. So what does this mean for the TMP? As you all know, the TMP offers long-term solutions to many issues, and importantly, I think it opens up discussions for other really complicated issues, one being barricades and connectivity. I mentioned this just a minute ago, but really, the best vehicle for us to address these community concerns is going to be the prioritized project list. And I have a slide here that really kind of reframes what I mean when I say that. So we, and council's seen the slide before, but really, what we did for the project list is identify in the vast amounts of data that we already had what projects were out there in adopted plans, whether that's the comp plan, a CIP, or Parks and Rec plan, as well as community input. We have folks in each department that really track community input about sidewalk gaps or other projects. So we took all of that, and we built a universe of projects, and that's an unprioritized, unconstrained, humongous list of projects. At one point, it had close to 180 projects on the list. So what we did from that point on, after we gathered everything, was we said, okay, well, based on the outreach that was done in 2017, really, that kind of phase-one outreach where the goals were established, we evaluated those projects against the goals, and then we reduced the list. We combined where necessary. We really streamlined the list, and then we brought it back to the community and said, okay, what do you think? And that's where the workshops came in. And then now, what we're going to do is really get into what are the funding constraints? So provide that layer of reality to the project list. What are the funding constraints? What are our expected revenues and projected revenues? So really applying that lens to the TMP to get to a really realistic prioritized project list that we can just knock out by going 1 through X. And then that, of course, will go back to the community in open-house format to really see if we're on the right track, if this resonates with people, if this really is consistent with what they believe to be true. And that little note in the bottom right is slightly different than the one that you have in your agenda packet, because we, between publishing the packet and today, we've now scheduled that meeting. So it's actually March 10th, where council will get the first chance to review the draft prioritized project list. And to kind of sum it up here, we have a little high-level table here for next steps. So I've kind of hinted at some of these already, but we are still going to be reviewing public input, developing that draft prioritized project list, and starting to build the draft TMP so that we can hit the ground running when things get really busy. And then I mentioned earlier, in March, March 10th, we will have the first council review of the prioritized project list. And then basically, between the beginning of next year and springtime, we'll be developing a draft TMP, and that'll be really exciting for all of us and, I think, give us something to get our hands on tangible and really dig into. And then between spring and summer, we'll start going back to the public and saying, okay, are we hearing you correctly? Is this right? And then from there, we'll begin the legislative review process. Ultimately, our goal is to adopt the TMP into the Comprehensive Plan by December of 2020, and that's a Comprehensive Plan Amendment action. So with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I can answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, thank you. Good presentation. On one of your slides, you talk about funding and constraints, and so I just kind of jotted down a few items that came to mind. Some of the constraints, cost and funding, of course. Topography, for example, you're not going to build a light rail system in Sumamish. Political, there's political constraints also as well, and that's largely examples of monopoly for metro. On some of the recommendations, have you tagged some of these constraints in more detail, such as the examples I shared?
Yeah. We're definitely still working on that, so it's part of the conversation right now, but absolutely, we are keenly aware of a lot of these constraints in addition to funding and costs. So that will absolutely be part of the conversation, and we can continue the conversation when we come back to council in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I don't have any more lights on.
Okay.
Must have wowed us with your presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's attention to the TMP.
Thank you. Okay, our next discussion item is the Saheli Way Corridor Analysis Update.
Yeah, I didn't know I'd do that. Spare with us as we load up the presentation.
Do you want to sleep at 10:00? Okay. I just broke out. It's based on my alarm, and then I'm supposed to get eight hours of sleep. It's not going to happen, obviously. I need some M&Ms or something.
I don't know about you, but I don't think we're going to end at 10:00.
Oh, no. I called that before we ever started on the TMP.
Are there items we can take off the agendas that have been added to our next council meeting?
We've already approved the agenda.
Looks a little different. We'll be using a PDF, so it'll be a little different. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, fellow council members. I'm Andrew Zager, the city engineer. To my right, I have Brent Powell and Peter DeBolt with Partit, who's our design consultant for this project. And tonight, we're going to provide an update of the Sahali Way corridor study and where we are with that. So our agenda is to briefly go over the project need and scope and why we're here. We're going to discuss the existing conditions as they are out there today. We'll do a little focus on the intersection of SR 202 and Sahali. And then we'll go into the alternatives where we are with the 2035 studies in regard to four options. That would be the no build, as it is today. If we don't do anything, there's a three-lane option. We looked at the possibility of reversible lanes. And then what would it take to meet our concurrency both today and also in 2035? And then at the end, we will then discuss the next steps as we finalize the report when we go from here. Begin with reason we're here. So we had a motion and direction by council in the July 16th meeting to rehash and re-update the previous study we had in Sahali that was done in 2015 to reanalyze based on the tip corridor of the Sahali project that was extended to go beyond 25th, but also down to 12th, north to the city limits. And then address it as we looked at both current concurrency, but also the 2035 concurrency, both in segments, corridors, and then level services at the intersections. As we know, the limits we have in North Sahali Way corridor currently does not meet our concurrency requirements. We have non-motorized users, have minimal facilities out there along the corridor, as we know. There is an issue with 202 that is a traffic constraint, both at the intersection and the corridor itself. And overall, our project goals for this project is to provide, upgrade our facilities out there for all users, meet concurrency, and then enhance for transit, future transit out there. And with that, I will turn it over to Brent, our consultant, to go on and address the study.
Thank you. My name is Brent Powell with Partit. I'm a project manager. It's a pleasure to be here and talk about the Sahali Way corridor study that we've been working on. So I'll start by talking about the study area that we're looking at. You can see it in front of you, but basically, we're looking at northeast 12th place, all the way to the north end of the city, and then all the way up to SR 202 as well. I've noted here the different concurrency segments that are currently, the subdivisions of the different concurrency areas. So we have a few different segments here, and there's actually a couple additional ones that we can talk about. But we have 12th to 25th is a concurrency segment, 25th to 36th is actually a concurrency segment, and then we have a one-block segment, 36th to 37th, and then 37th to the city limit. And then we also, as I mentioned, studied north of the city limit up to SR 202, recognizing that is, of course, a constraint on traffic as you're driving through the Sahali corridor. So we're going to start by talking about here is just the existing conditions analysis that we performed. So what we did in September was we collected traffic count data. So we looked at peak hour volumes in the morning and afternoon peak hours and did an evaluation of how those reflect in terms of intersection operations and also with the city concurrency requirements. At the bottom of this slide here is just a brief note about what those requirements are for the concurrency evaluations that we performed. Of course, the segments themselves have to meet a volume-to-capacity ratio standard of 1.4 or less. So that means that your volume can be up to 1.4 times your capacity, as defined by the city code and the way the concurrency standard is set up. That concurrency and capacity standard are based on the Highway Capacity Manual with some modifications that have been approved by the council before. So that's the segment-level analysis that we looked at. There's a corridor-level analysis as well. So we're talking about the Sahali Way north corridor is the study area here, and that's that range from 12th all the way to the northern city limit. That corridor has to operate at a volume-to-capacity ratio of 1.1 or better. So you can have situations within that framework where certain segments operate at a volume-to-capacity ratio of 1.2 or 1.3, which is above that segment or that corridor-level analysis threshold. And everything can still meet all of the standards because of weighted averages within the corridor. So we'll talk about some of the instances where that comes up later on. There's also the intersection level of concurrency, which is defined as meeting a level of service requirement. So that's the typical way to analyze the peak hour operations for an intersection. If you're talking about a traffic signal, that means you're looking at all of the vehicles that are entering that intersection and how long, on average, they're delayed by the fact that that traffic signal is there. And if you come up to a level of service D or better, you're meeting the concurrency requirement. And in nearly every case, there is a slight exception. If you have a larger or wider cross-section, it can go down to level of service E and still meet the standards. But we'll talk about that as a special case where it comes up. So you're seeing on this slide here the section views of basically what the roadway looks like today and the evaluations and where we're seeing the concurrency failures in the existing condition. So we have the kind of two general configurations out there in this study area currently. On the left section there, you're seeing 12th to 25th, which typically has a sidewalk. On the west side, there's a planter strip, there's a curb and gutter, and a bike lane. And then you have your southbound travel lane. It's a single travel lane. You generally have either some sort of median or a turn lane developing at your intersections. And then you have a single northbound lane. Now, east of that northbound lane, you don't have a bike lane or any sidewalk. You have a shoulder instead, and that shoulder varies in width, but it's about eight feet on average. That shoulder is where some of the bus stops are located, basically, as you're waiting at that shoulder. Once you get north of 25th, you have a bit of a different cross-section. You no longer have sidewalk. You no longer have any bike lanes. You no longer have any curb and gutter on either side of the road. So you have no planter strip as well. Instead, you have your travel lanes with a shoulder on the outside, on each side of them. Now, there is at certain intersections, the more major intersections do have turn pockets, so they have a left turn storage area in between those travel lanes. But the distinction here is not every single intersection does. There's a few, they're generally for more minor little cul-de-sac developments, that only have the two through lanes. So if you're making a left turn in or out of those developments, you're doing it from that through lane as well and potentially backing up traffic behind you. So we ran these through the concurrency evaluation, you know, per the city requirements. And the overall corridor has a failure in the northbound direction in the morning. So that's, you know, as you're, basically, the commuter traffic is leaving the city, going north out of the city. What we're seeing there is the volume-to-capacity of the road exceeds the 1.1 requirement for the overall corridor. There's also two intersections where we're seeing a concurrency failure at the intersection level, and that's in the morning and afternoon peak hours at the northeast 36th Street intersection, as well as at the 28th slash 223rd intersection. So with that, I want to talk briefly before we get into the recommendations or the items that we're looking at at 2035, I shouldn't say recommendations, but the alternatives that we're evaluating in 2035. I want to talk briefly about one of the constraints on this corridor that we have, which is the SR 202 operations north of this study area. So as you probably well know, the 202 corridor is congested. WashDOT has recently completed a study to evaluate how to alleviate some of that congestion, improve operations in this, basically, north of Sammamish in particular, that stretch. And one of the things that they recommended out of that is a roundabout treatment at the intersection of Sahali and SR 202. Their recommendation includes an interesting concept called metering, which is not all that common with roundabouts, but can have some operational benefits. Basically, what that would involve is you'd have a traffic signal controlling some of the movements at the roundabout. So you would actually be limited, you'd be metered before you can even enter that roundabout at times of the day. Now, the WashDOT study recommends putting that metering in place in the morning peak hour. And so what actually you'd have is basically pretty good operations then for travelers on Sahali going through. They'd actually be able to kind of meter out, or they would restrict opposing traffic coming through. And you'd actually have fairly decent operations per the WashDOT study. Now, we reviewed the WashDOT study. We have access to some of the data they were looking at. We had basically information on the size and the configuration of the roundabout that they were presenting. But we didn't have all of the same data available to us. So we actually took some of the traffic data we had and ran their configuration through our models to evaluate the performance of the roundabout in the morning and the PM peak hour. And what we were finding was that the operations wouldn't be quite as rosy as the WashDOT report was saying. So we were finding that level of service would be level of service D overall in the morning, which is still potentially an improvement, but level of service D is a little bit worse than what they were showing in their report. And then level of service E in the PM peak hour. Now, want to quickly kind of describe some of the differences or some of what we believe are the differences behind the two different models. For starters, we're actually looking at 2035 data. They were reviewing the roundabout in 2025 and then 2045. And one of the big factors at roundabout operations can be how many trucks you have going through there, or your heavy vehicle percentage is what we refer to it as. Our data actually picked up more heavy vehicles when we did our counts than what they were showing in their report. We were looking at some approaches of this intersection on SR 202 in particular, having 5% or 8% trucks or buses, but most likely trucks in this area. Their numbers were coming in at more like 1% to 2%. You can think about, if you've been through a roundabout, the impact that a larger vehicle can have on the travel flow because you're so dependent on what everybody else in the circle is doing. So one of the reasons that I believe we're seeing a little bit worse operations when we run the model is that we're showing a higher percentage of trucks and buses kind of clogging up that intersection a little bit more than what their analysis was showing. I do also want to highlight that the nature of a roundabout can lead to some imbalanced operations. If you think about a traffic signal, we can program certain green times and you can give a priority to a certain movement. Of course, you know, you think about 228th, you're giving more green time to that north and southbound movement, right? At a roundabout, in particular, a roundabout in the afternoon peak hour at this location, you'd expect to see a lot of traffic moving from west to east through the roundabout on SR 202. All of that traffic is going to run at a nearly continuous flow through the intersection, and that actually results in basically the Sahali traffic that's queued up waiting to turn left or right at the roundabout, having to wait a very long time to find a gap where they can slide in and get into the roundabout. So that was one of, basically, a couple of the factors that I was noticing with the way they had their configuration in the WashDOT report. What I came up with was a slightly different version of that roundabout that actually would change things and kind of improve operations, I think, overall. And that's what's shown on this slide here. There's a couple differences here. The first is that, and really the major one, is that we're showing two lanes going west to east through the intersection, so two eastbound through lanes. As I was talking about a minute ago, there's that gap issue that develops when you have such a continuous flow of traffic moving east on SR 202 in the future. You can think about what the volumes are now. They're going to be larger in the future. Providing a second travel lane there opens up more gap opportunities because you can basically space cars into both travel lanes. They can proceed through. They're not always in one continuous line. They can go into two lanes, move potentially through the intersection more quickly, and that opens up more gap opportunities for the northbound movements on Sahali. With these results, seeing a big improvement in the north, well, in the northbound direction, but in particular in the PM peak hour, before I was showing a level of service E with their WashDOT recommendation, this is modeling at a level of service B in the PM peak hour. So something to keep in mind that this is a potential option that we could look at in terms of an alternative to the WashDOT report. One of the other things that's coming into play here is you can imagine that when we're talking about, you know, complex queue lengths and stuff like that, we can really use some more advanced tools to model the operations of an intersection like this. The WashDOT report and their study basically reviewed each intersection along SR 202 in isolation. So they weren't taking into account a lot of merging and diverging behaviors and queuing behaviors. There's a potential that when we look at it in something like a microsimulation model, we can pick up some of that extra traffic behavior that's kind of playing into things here. And we haven't done that yet, but I just want to put it out there as an option. We could further refine this and kind of continue to look at this analysis with that more advanced model and basically be able to report with a little bit more confidence what the operations would look like. It's worth noting that that model, that more advanced traffic simulation model, is something that is part of our scope, and we will be presenting actually video simulations to you in January coming out of that. But at this time, it's not going to include the roundabout unless we decide to move forward with that direction. So I'll move on to then a discussion of what our 2035 analysis was.
I think there may be questions that we want to ask based on
Absolutely. Go ahead.
The 202. So Councilmembers.
Just one question on the roundabout. Well, actually, two questions, sorry. One is, is it a foregone conclusion that a roundabout is even going to improve the traffic flow that much because there is congestion on 202? And then the second one is, without a metered, I mean, I've never actually been in, well, that's not true, but without the metering on the roundabout here in the morning, will the people who are heading westbound on 202, will they actually be able to get into the roundabout? Because if you've got a steady flow of traffic coming down the hill, my experience in a roundabout is that when you've got that one side overloaded, it makes the entry from a 90-degree angle difficult, if not impossible.
That's absolutely correct. So the metering can help alleviate that, yes. And without the metering in the morning peak, obviously, we have a lot of northbound Sahali traffic that's going to be making a turn, you know, a left turn at that intersection. That will restrict the entrance of those people moving westbound on 202.
Because you have a lot of traffic coming that way, too. So I don't know that, you know, I mean, coming westbound. Yeah. So I feel like that, to me, like, in general, I feel like roundabouts are often more efficient. But my understanding is when you have this kind of a 90-degree angles having equal amounts of traffic at the same time, that's where they can be challenging.
I agree with that, yeah. I'd agree with that yes
and then that first part which is you know is this how much is improving this intersection going to really improve the traffic flow I feel like we have to look further westbound at to determine how much doing an improvement on the intersection will really change things if if it backs up all the way to the intersection
right and that would be a much larger study basically on the level of what the WashDOT study was getting at now I think the full benefit of the roundabout would come into play if you also did other improvements on SR 202 obviously outside the control of this agency here but theoretically yes it's a corridor wide system improvement WashDOT identified a number of items that are either near term midterm or long term and this is a middle term recommendation on their end so it would have some improvements it certainly would have improvements outside of those peak times too that's another thing to consider we often get kind of bogged down in the peak hours but there's you know other times a day where you don't have necessarily all that congestion on 202 this could be a quicker way for people to either access Sammamish or get out of Sammamish with a roundabout but I think that would warrant a much larger study and really looking to the WashDOT study would be the best guidance for that
done another quick question and I agree further studying is probably warranted relative to any treatments we do to this particular intersection but I wonder if there were any considerations given for alternative ideas with within the roundabout and by that I mean and this may be very hard for me to describe without a laser pointer or my finger on the roundabout but if you altered and this seems really counterintuitive to start removing lanes but if you removed the second northbound lane on Sahale so you had a single like you had two lanes but if you're in the right hand lane you are committed to 202 eastbound if you are in the left lane you are committed to the roundabout and you get the interior lane only that way if you are traveling westbound from on 202 you only get the exterior lane so that both the 202 there one it's one lane in each direction from Sahale and 202 you only get the two lanes right as you enter into the intersection right so if I think the traffic flow is probably going to be similar and maybe better and may eliminate the need for the metering that they're putting in there which is likely just going to stock up vehicles to some degree maybe to a lesser degree than a traffic signal does currently but I just wondered if there were any alternative playings with the roundabout itself
there certainly could be this was I'll admit kind of a first pass at an alternative we didn't do a full study into every single option I think based on what I was hearing you describe mayor was potentially a conflict with some of the turning movements as you kind of make your way towards the northwest corner of the intersection
my point is is in the in the AM hour the traffic is coming northbound on Sahale down towards the roundabout and it's coming westbound from 202 but if you give them each their own dedicated lane in the roundabout then you don't have the problem with I can't get in because the lanes are full
right that option would work but only if you didn't allow people to turn westbound left from 202 onto Sahale
okay right because they wouldn't be able to
there's a conflict point then in the roundabout that you've restricted so
yeah they wouldn't be able to yeah
I think there's potential there I do think metering also you know doesn't have to be a super dramatic treatment it could be fairly frequent that it changes green to red for for northbound Sahale traffic which could open up some gaps and kind of find a middle ground there it wouldn't necessarily be like waiting at a signal and then waiting at another intersection to get through the roundabout it could be a little bit more frequent changing there I will also note that just one minor thing that we observed with the WashDOT studies it didn't appear they had that north leg of the intersection which I know is not really a major traffic generator or anything like that but it was just something we observed in their image which is what you see here borrowed from their report didn't include that so we did include that and I want to expand real quick I meant to mention something more about the micro simulation here and why I would particularly want to see it introducing that second lane through the intersection creates a downstream merge point right you we're not going to assume they're going to widen SR 202 to two lanes in the eastbound direction so at some point we need to establish if that merging behavior would actually be beneficial or are we just going to merge traffic downstream and it's just going to end up blocking this roundabout so that's really where the simulation tool could guide us and the tool that WashDOT used and we use for this preliminary analysis is more limited so with that I'll hop over to our 2035 work that we were presenting today which is our comparison of the four different 2035 scenarios that we've been looking at so we started with a no build option which is basically retain the existing road the way it is but you're going to see the volume growth by 2035 there's the three lane option which reflects what the current tip has authorized which is expanding between 12th and 25th to a consistent three lane cross section with alternating medians and left turn lanes and otherwise making no improvements north of 37th then there's the reversible lane option which I believe came out of some members of council here that they wanted us to evaluate that's an option that builds off that three lane and it takes it with an improvement of a reversible lane north of 37th all the way to SR 202 and we'll talk more about what that could look like and some of our concerns that we have with that and then finally we were looking at what we're calling the concurrency alternative which was basically what is the set of configurations that will get us to meeting concurrency by 2035 so we'll go through each of those and I want to just highlight that some of these are a little bit preliminary at this point but the 2035 no build is pretty set in stone so we have the volumes from the traffic city traffic model if you make no improvements the roadway by 2035 you're seeing more failures than you're seeing today as we'd expect you still have the failure in the corridor but now it's in the northbound direction in the morning and the southbound direction in the evening during those commuter peaks 37th to the city limit you're seeing a failure in those same time periods 36 to 37th you're also seeing that northbound failure in the morning now there's
sorry just before you hop off this slide we've got questions but finish this slide go ahead
I was just going to highlight mayor that there's there's now four intersections that are failing to meet the concurrency requirements in the city
okay council member Stewart
I was gonna move that we extend the meeting to 11pm before
second all those in favor say aye
aye
opposed aye by 061 we have extended till 11pm
all right hopefully I'm not keeping up anyone past their bedtime
council member Hornish
I want to understand the logic of the no build scenario if there was no improvement in Sahale and it's failing now how would the growth occur
the growth will still can occur at some point whether you improve the facilities or you don't improve the facilities there is going to be growth in the city or regionally
oh the GMA won't allow it
you might expect to see more regional traffic growth but the model
so what are the assumptions that you're assuming are you assuming additional housing developments being developed to cause the growth or are you assuming growth from other factors
it would generally stem from additional housing I do want to clarify we did not develop the traffic data that's going into this we were using the city traffic model from 2035 which is showing higher volumes than in the current condition
so it assumes growth okay I just want to understand okay that's what I wanted to understand thank you okay
if I could just speak it does assume the growth in the city but also outside as well so you've got the
okay both okay so with the 2035 no build scenario it's the same cross sections that we were looking at before because the roadway configuring configuration has not changed at all now if we hop down to our 2035 what we're calling three lane scenario which is again basically establishing what's in the current tip so we've introduced in the southern portion here between 12th and 25th a now consistent cross section before it was currently it's kind of fluctuating in terms of whether there's a median or a turn lane now it's a consistent median or turn lane there's a sidewalk on both sides of the street there's a bike lane on both sides of the street there's still one travel lane per direction in the middle section of the corridor between 25th and 37th there's again one travel lane per direction with a consistent median or a turn lane there's a sidewalk on the west side of the street with a little bit of a planter and a bike lane on the west side of the street and then on the east side of the street there's a shoulder which could and we would hope would be used for some bicycle users to keep them out of the travel lane give them a safer space to ride in the northern section of the corridor basically north of 37th there's no improvement it's the same way it is today it's a two lane cross section with basically no pedestrian or bike facilities this like I said is the current program in the tip and it does still result in some concurrency failures by 2035 the entire corridor is still failing to meet that 1.1 volume to capacity ratio threshold and the north portion of the city the 37th to city limit segment is also failing to meet the northbound morning demand and the southbound afternoon demand and we do have a concurrency failure at the 37th way intersection so moving on now to the reversible lane option this is completely the same up until 37th as we just discussed and then the change is from 37 to 202 we'd introduce a reversible lane so that concept might be unfamiliar because it's certainly not something that I've ever seen on a local street around here but it is in effect the similar concept to what you can see on like the I-5 express lanes where you have reversible operations on the same slab of pavement what this would be is a center lane north of 37th it would require some widening at that point and it would operate at different times of the day or different times of the week in reverse directions so you would never operate it at the same in two directions at one time but it would be time constrained on what would be in operation
I have a question on this
yes
why did you just do the reversible lane section from 37th down to 202 why not the full length of the corridor if you're bothering to put in a median and turn lane there is there a rationale
there are some rationales can I get to my next slide to explain that okay I will highlight just that with this configuration because it doesn't affect anything south of 37th we have those same concurrency failures and everything is looking about the same as the three lane option so I have a couple slides here on what reversible lanes do and how we have some limitations with them they're generally controlled with either electronic signing or a static sign like what you see in the image here that static sign or that electronic signing will tell you if the lane is open to you or closed to you at certain times of the day one of the reasons mayor Mauta that we chose the northern segment here is because we have basically nothing in terms of conflicting or left turn cross street demand when you get into a reversible lane situation it becomes tricky on how to handle the intersections and the cross street traffic you have a couple options you can either completely restrict left turns in the movement that doesn't have the reversible lane open in effect basically for example if you were to extend the reversible lane all the way through this study area and you have an intersection like 25th which has sizable left turn demand or at least significant you can either restrict that or you can force people to make that left turn movement in that single lane in the opposing direction where they only have one lane of travel available to them and they've lost in effect their turn pockets their left turn lane so that creates a bit of a safety concern right because and an operational concern because now you're backing up traffic maybe they don't expect the backup maybe you have more rear end collisions things like that so that was the major rationale for why we didn't want to consider it in the more you know populated areas the with the side street traffic between 37th and 12th as I mentioned the area north of 37th you have the cross street at 50th outside the city you have one or two driveways but it's very very minor and really what our proposal would be is to actually stop it before you even get to 50th so that you don't have to deal with the complicated operations at that intersection our intent if if we were to even consider this alternative of a reversible lane it provides a second lane of capacity in the peak direction so in the mornings you'd want it in the northbound direction going downhill towards SR 202 at other times because we have so few cross streets in this area we would deviate from the typical operation which is to make it a two-way left turn lane which is what you kind of see in this image here in a lot of applications of a reversible lane you'll just make it a two-way left turn lane in non-peak times but there's so little demand for left turn movements north of 37th it makes sense to us that it would just become a north sorry a southbound lane in effect operating like a climbing lane giving you a second lane going up the hill as you enter the city your heavy vehicles and such could move over your slower moving traffic could move over and your faster vehicles could pass those in the that second lane now having said all that we have some serious concerns about how this would operate and particularly from a safety perspective you can imagine that we have fairly high-speed vehicles out there it's a 45 mile an hour posted speed limit currently you don't have anything like this in the city really nothing like this locally I mean you can see this image here is taken from Arizona which was really the closest operation of this I could find you know outside of a freeway or something like that there's a key distinction between what you're seeing in this image in Arizona and what you'd have on Sahale and that's that this Arizona example is flat it's slower speeds you can see everything ahead of you there's no curves or vertical or horizontal curves to really create sight distance issues one of the major challenges that you could have with a reversible lane is basically if people aren't complying with it or they don't know how to comply with it because it's an unfamiliar thing you potentially have 45 mile an hour traffic going head on into each other and that's obviously a very dangerous very scary situation the road has not been designed to meet sight distance of two 45 mile an object 45 mile an hour objects moving towards each other it's designed instead for objects moving towards a fixed object at a certain travel speed so it's a very different calculation when you're potentially putting two vehicles approaching each other so really for all those reasons and for the fact that it's not going to solve the concurrency needs we recommend that we basically take this option off the table we don't think it really has any merit and particularly from a safety perspective should not be considered further so we'll turn now to the last of our 2035 options we were looking at which we're calling the concurrency alternative basically the alternative that gets us to meeting the concurrency requirements with the 2035 data now this is a wider cross section than the three lane option if you start at the southern end it's still a two it's still a one lane per direction from 12th up to 25th and then even from 25th up to 36th the preliminary results are showing that you still only need one travel lane per direction but because of the increased capacity that you're seeing on the roadway it's going to trigger some additional demand and so what we really have here is a wider a five lane cross section between 36th and 37th and then a four lane cross section with a little bit of a median between 37th and SR 202 I was talking previously about the concurrency failures with the three lane option in 2035 the easiest way to solve that and really the only way to solve that with the concurrency framework we have here is to provide extra travel lanes to provide increased capacity so that you reduce your volume to capacity ratio into an acceptable level now there is a bit of a phenomenon that occurs with that as you build more road even if it's just an extra travel lane you can expect to see some extra traffic taking that street so what we're seeing here is a little bit of an increased volume corridor wide on Sahale under this scenario because you've widened portions of the roadway it becomes more attractive to people they think there's more capacity there and they start taking it a little bit more so what we're finding is we actually have some new preliminary data that's come in to help us refine this and we're getting kind of data over and over again to help us refine exactly what the limits of this would it be 36 would it be a little further south or a little further north we're still refining that and that's why I'm calling this preliminary results but it's related to that sensitivity in terms of adding extra capacity the road can lead to a change in demand on the roadway
we have some questions
yeah
council member Hornish
so I thought in the prior option to three lane we were still failing with the three lane option south of 36 does by adding the five lane north of 37th relieve that failure south of 36
so previously we had two and I'm back to the three lane slide here we had two instances of either segment or corridor level failure we had the the We had the segment level was 37th to the city limit. So, actually, 36 was okay in the segment operation.
Okay.
The issue was that that failure there was actually weighting the entire corridor into failure, which is why we have the corridor-level failure as well. So, it's really solving that 37th to SR202, or 37th to the city limit, which is, you know, basically the same volume as you get all the way to SR202. So, it's trying to address that. So, we started by looking at, okay, we expand that section to a four-lane option, and that's, I'll go back to the concurrency model here. We expand that area from 37th to 202 to a four-lane section. That's when we started to see the actual increase in demand come through. And so, that trickled into actually extending it a little bit further south--
To 36.
Down to 36.
All right. All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one additional question as it relates to when you add those extra lanes and the demand for it. My instant concern becomes 37th and cut-through traffic that goes around up on collector streets to bypass the bottleneck all the way down, where it's only one lane in each direction potentially to drop down to the section, which is exactly what I do every morning right now. Was that looked at at all? I mean, those roads are-- the roads up there at 37th through Timberline and some of those neighborhoods were not intended to carry volumes of cars. And is that what we're going to see? People bypass Sahale to drop down on 37th to catch those widened lanes?
I can look into that in more detail.
Okay.
We do have access to basically the citywide demand model in 2035 reflecting this scenario. And it can tell us, you know, in addition to Sahale traffic, other cross-streets like 37th, and is that increasing? And we could attempt to look and see where is that traffic coming from? Is it more cut-through traffic?
Yeah. I don't want to trade one problem for another.
Of course. Right. One thing to keep in mind is, you know, there are obviously a few major routes going north out of the city or going south into the city from the north end. There can be a value and potentially a desire to want to concentrate traffic onto one of those routes and kind of reduce traffic stress on the other one. So, when I'm talking about this increased growth here, Councilmember Hornish, I'm speaking about more traffic going to Sahale, coming away from streets like 244th or east like Sammamish Parkway. So, it's not that you build a new segment of road, and now you have 10 more houses coming. It's that you've dispersed traffic into this more concentrated area away from your other major roads. So, does that answer your question, Mayor Macho?
It does, although I think the likely scenario is someone coming off of East Lake-Sammamish Parkway to use Sahale. They'd be driving east so they could go west again. I think that's probably unlikely.
If I could just chime in, I think, like you said, it's the people that are normally coming from, you know, going your route, wanting to bypass and going to 37th. More people in your neighborhood or up in the area that normally would go down the hill, go down Inglewood. Instead of going that way, they're going to switch over to Sahale. So, it's not so much pulling off of East Lake-Sammamish Parkway. It's going to be more the neighborhoods that would normally go down the hill in Inglewood, may now use Sahale because it's a more attractive roadway.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. In your modeling here, did you at all validate our assumptions of what our roadway capacities are today? And what assumptions did you use for the capacities on these larger-- or on these improved areas?
So, we were focused on the concurrency model.
Right. So, the oversea has--
Yes.
--a capacity number, right? So, you have your measured volume over your calculated capacity. And so, my question is, what assumptions did you use for the calculated capacity of the roadway? Because my 1.1 or my 1.4 is very much dependent on my denominator.
It absolutely is. Yes. So, we use the framework that's been approved by this council, which is to base it off of fundamentally the Highway Capacity Manual, which is kind of the nationwide standard for roadway intersection operations and analysis. In that document, they provide kind of general, if you have a two-lane road versus a four-lane road, this is the travel that you'd expect to accommodate. Then, there were some modifications made by folks from FER and PIERs in terms of--
No, I'm familiar with all that. So, you just used that?
Yes, we used that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And then, my question-- my other question would be, when you looked at a reversible lane, did you ever consider just having a reversible transit-only lane that would not operate in the center but would actually operate just on the westbound side that could reverse directions and come up with any information on how much traffic-- like, how many people would we have to get riding the bus to reduce the traffic to meet the concurrency needs, right? Is it 5%? Is it 10% kind of thing? Because if you had a reversible transit-only lane, you would eliminate your challenges of head-on collisions because it's transit-only. So, no one else would be in it. And I'm assuming we could make sure that the bus drivers all knew which direction to head, right? Or when they could use that lane. And if we put it on the westbound side, right, then your sidewalks on just one side of the roadway would work because people could get on and off and have a sidewalk and those types of things.
That was not part of our study. So, we had not looked at that alternative.
All right.
What was that? Since we haven't looked at that, I'm not sure what that would be. But it would be, you know, similar to widening, like we're talking about here with the three-lane.
Right. Because it's really a similar lane width that you'd have to be adding. So, it wouldn't be necessarily drastically different than what you're proposing here, I don't think.
Correct.
So, instead of a center-turn lane from, you know, say, 25th north, you'd be adding a reversible transit-only lane kind of thing.
Right.
Right. Okay. All right.
Okay. So, now, we want to just kind of go over the next steps. As we discussed, we're talking about the next steps as we move towards a study coming back in January. We wanted to go to council to get approval to essentially remove the reversible lane option in our study based on what we've already found, what we discussed, and use that effort and push it more towards using the modeling, coming up with more simulations, especially at the 202-Sahale intersection. So, when we come back in January, we have a little bit more of the visuals, and we have those micro-simulations that we talked about. So, at this point, that's one of the questions we want to pose to council is, do we want to eliminate any more work on looking at the reversible lanes?
Councilmember Stewart.
I'd like to see us look at the reversible transit-only lane that would be on the westbound side. Because I think that, looking at a lot of the feedback from the TMP, there were a lot of people who were asking for more transportation options when we consider that light rail will be in Marymore in 2024. And would this be a way to move people from Sammamish to the light rail, not in their single occupancy vehicles? Those types of things. I just think that would be something worth looking at.
So, would it be, I think, as you asked, how many vehicles we need to pull off the road and send it forward to work?
Right.
To get into concurrency?
Yeah.
Do we have council support for that? Councilmember Hornish.
I am not supportive of that because I think the safety concerns override the value to that. I understand the bus drivers who know which way to go. It's the car drivers that are traveling the other direction that may not know which way to go. And they hit the bus, and they just hurt a lot of people. So, I'm not for this. I would prefer to do away with it at all completely, as suggested by the safety experts and the engineering experts. And I also, I guess, I hadn't thought through the concept of the turning where you need to have intersections. So, it was an aha moment when I saw that. It's like, yeah, you can't have a reversible lane. If people have to turn, it defeats the whole purpose. So, to do it just for a small segment, to do it for transit, I don't think that solves the safety issues. So, I would be supportive of doing away with it completely as an analysis.
Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I think it's worth letting them consider it because they hadn't thought about it to find out if that would alleviate the safety concerns enough to make it be worthwhile. I don't think-- they haven't thought about it at all, so we don't know what the--
I think, before we charge them with work, I think they need council support. If we don't have council support for it-- okay. So, I think I'm not seeing any more lights. I'm assuming we're okay with removing the reversible lane. Is that what I'm gathering from council? Uh, Councilmember Ritchie.
So, hey there. Thank you for the information. It's been very helpful to me. And I had a couple aha moments, as Councilmember Hornish described. It's enlightening, definitely. This is the kind of detailed thing, frankly, that I didn't think we got before, and it's been very helpful to me. In terms of the-- I think we're trying to do here, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Stewart, but what would help me is to try to better understand what the benefits would be of an HOV lane only. Is that reversible? Is there a way to make it safe? I mean, it's Councilmember Hornish. How do people turn off that? I mean, that wouldn't work. Is there a way to make it work? Just being responsive to what people mentioned in the TMP, the public outreach aspect of the TMP. Is there-- I don't know. I mean, I guess, is it worth your time? That would be-- I'm kind of asking you guys. Is there a way to make it work? Is it worth your time? If it is, then maybe we should pursue it. If not, then-- no.
I'm Peter DeBolt with Partite. Are we on here?
Yeah, you're good.
We have looked at this general idea of reversible transit lanes in other areas. And what we've typically have found is that in order to create safe operations for such a thing-- and it isn't specifically on the reversible idea-- but in order to create a safe place for the users of the transit service to reside while they're waiting for their buses, you end up creating more footprint with it. And I'm trying to think through, if we did it as a reversible lane, we'd probably need separation between that bus-only facility and any other traffic. So, you had-- because as a bus comes up, you always have typically right-hand operations out of most of the coaches currently operating in the area. There are buses available that can enter on either side, but no one in our current fleet configuration has such a vehicle. But if you were to have it on both, on just one side, you'd have to have that probably 10-to-12-foot separation, which would negate any savings, I think, we'd see out of it. So, that's my first reaction, then also following up. If you have a bus-running counter-operation to other vehicles, you'd really want separation from that. So, at least my initial thought, I think, is intriguing idea. It's probably not very practical in this corridor.
And we're very limited in space anyway, in a lot of that area, too.
Exactly. I think there'd be better options if we wanted to do this, create a more traditional HOV lane.
Right. That's kind of-- yeah, the HOV is also-- so, just if I can, real quick to add on to that. Did we discuss, or did you guys look at-- maybe I didn't see bus turnouts, actually pull-outs that would separate transit just to get things going? I mean, I don't know, but that's been my experience up and down that road a couple of times, you know, a day, and seeing that. Is there a way to include that in what you're looking? Or did you include, like, dedicated lit-- I mean, like, we talked about the TMP, a dedicated-- you know, a stand like you'd see down in the south side of King County, where it's like literally lit and said, "Bus seating," and the bus pulls off, and people can stand there, not be like right up against traffic. Is that-- do we have room for that? Or is that safety-conscious?
That is safety-conscious, absolutely. And it wasn't the level of detail we're looking at at this point of the study. I think it's something to consider as we move forward. And specifically, if the thought is to add bus pull-outs, the transit operators traditionally don't like the bus pull-outs because it makes it very difficult for them to merge into traffic. Now, that said, what we have found is successful at signalized intersections where we can prioritize the signal operations. It can be successful. But that's probably the next stage later when you get into more final design type of approach or even preliminary design.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we cleared through our queue of questions.
Okay. So, I think we're just looking for the final decision on whether we want to pursue the reversible lane or not, just to--
I thought we did. No. I don't think we do.
Okay. So, with that, then, we will come back in January.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah, or not.
Not. We will not be looking at that further as we come back in January. But we will be using that time that we saved for the study and put that towards the modeling and the simulation. So, we'll have a little more visuals as we come back in January. So, our next steps will be finalizing analysis and report. We'll be looking at the travel times, delays, and the level of services, develop our simulation videos. And then, we'll be also coming back with preliminary cost estimates of these alternatives. And then, again, yes, we'll be planning on being here in January 21st.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Just Councilmember Hornish.
So, I just want to make sure I have in my head, and everybody else understands if I understand it, of the three options left, the only option that gives us passing concurrency in 2035 is the concurrency option to go four and five lanes north of 36th and 37th.
Correct. And that is correct.
Yes. So, I kind of wonder why we're doing the first two, frankly.
I think when we look at the simulations, you know, when we run those, and we've done those in our past projects, we actually see the delays, and you see what it looks like when you're driving it. And so, we'll be the-- even though we know the conclusion is what we want to pursue for concurrency-related, we can at least visually see, if we don't do anything, how bad is it going to be? And so, that's kind of what the study is and what the simulations. So, it really will solidify those decisions.
I think those inner workings, too--
Other solutions, maybe.
With SR202 is key.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. Okay. The-- so, if that's the case-- and just again to clarify, the only widening would be north of 36th and 37th, and that would be north of Sahale Golf Course, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, that would be-- okay. Fair enough.
Well, we have the turn lanes, but there's also be the safety improvements with bike lanes and shoulders as we--
So, you widen a little bit, but not a whole lot, like to get four or five lanes.
The travel lanes, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Fair point.
And I do want to note that we are still working with some newer data. So, these results are preliminary. We're still trying to basically run the exact model of that specific widening that you just discussed, Councilmember Hornish, to see if, when we look at the volumes with that specific scenario, does it still meet concurrency? Or does it now trigger additional growth in volume increase?
For Vedarama.
Yeah. Well, going back to the earlier issue, it's a moot point now, but I also would like to look at reversible lanes. I think we've all seen them in the East Coast and Midwest. And they've been running for decades, and they eventually end and have to turn off. So, I understand what you're saying, but it'd be interesting to look at nonetheless. That aside, I think it's important to look at all three of these options because, first of all, you're going to have another council here in another month, and you're going to be having new analysis being done, be having new analysis being done, as was been alluded to here, on the volume over capacity. This gives that next council some flexibility to be looking at that. So I'd be supportive of looking at all three. Thank you.
And just as an FYI in reversible lanes, please look at Vancouver, B.C. Far better than what we saw in that picture. Far better. So I think we're out of questions, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to the consent items that were polled. First is item two, which was the claims for period ending December 3rd.
Do you have to extend the meeting?
No, to 11. So. Deputy Mayor Moran, you pulled that?
Let me go to what it is. Yeah, this is an amount for $850, and this is for dues for the Sammamish Chamber. And so I went and asked what we get for $850 for dues, and I got to go back to what we got.
I can pull it up.
It's number two. Debbie sent it off to Deb Soggy.
Just scroll down. I think they're alphabetical. It says Chamber. I got it. For the membership includes entry to any member event for all staff and council at member price. It includes promotion of all city events all year long, an annual city address by the city manager to their business members once a year, and a listing on the online Chamber website.
So then the other information we got was how many lunches were actually gone to?
18.
Which was 18? Okay. So the question came up of, should we be renewing our dues? And then whether or not, since our dues are already paid till the 31st of this year, whether this was a decision that should be made by this council, or should this decision be made by the next council, because it's for next year's dues? And so I wanted to bring that up for discussion.
I did some quick math based on what Debbie Beadle gave us. It's actually a cost saving to the city if we don't join the Chamber. At $30, 18 lunches, it would cost us $540, plus the $850 dues would be $1390 if we just did the 18 lunches. At $45, which is the non-member price, would be $810. Councilmember Ritchie.
Interesting. I think there's more there than lunches, but having said that, I think this is more to what Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran said about, I think we delay paying this until the new council comes in, in our next meeting, or I think our next meeting is January 3rd, 7th, whatever? January 7th? Yeah, right on. So because we're paid through the end of the year, I'd think we should just pull it and hold it until the new council comes in, because it affects them directly, the new councilmembers. So my motion is to pull this until the January 7th meeting.
Second?
Check number 55.
It's been moved in second.
What's the check number? 55751.
Well, for her, I want her to, yeah.
Well, but pulling it, it would be discussed in January.
Pull it in for now.
And the next iteration, the council will decide whether or not. Whoop, I just lost some lights. Councilmember Hornish.
I want to clarify whether or not the check has been written and sent already. Is it still waiting in the back room? Can it be pulled? We can cancel it. We get a ref, I mean, we've already paid the check, though. That's my point, right? It's printed, but it hasn't been delivered? I don't know. Okay. But we can always cancel it. So if we need to cancel, it's in effect the same thing. Okay.
Okay, I don't have any more lights on, so the motion on the floor is that we are delaying renewing our membership with the Chamber until next year. No, there was. Valderrama seconded it, didn't you? I thought you didn't. I know, but you seconded the motion. Yeah. Councilmember Stewart.
So I guess if we're going to look at this from a, you know, it doesn't save us any money, are there other memberships? Do we need to review every single thing that the city is a member to? Do we do anything with Kiwanis, or Rotary, or anybody else? I mean, should we be looking at everything if we're talking about, you know, every couple hundred bucks? I'm just saying. I don't know, you know? Well, not in this one, but I'm just curious if there's any particular reason why we're focusing on this. And, I mean, part of me says that this is a way that we support our business community. I mean, it's $850. If we talk about it long enough, we'll spend more than that in fees to our staff, or whatever. But I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious why we, why we're singling this out, if there's any particular concern about supporting our business community.
Well, we do support our business community, but I'm not sure we do so by the standpoint that from our membership there, what we've received in the last year has not been support. We've gotten very negative support back. As a matter of fact, they've told us we're not business friendly. So, and that's been in their membership, so.
So this is because you don't like, because they haven't always agreed with us, so we shouldn't be members?
No, that's not true. Curious whether people agree or don't agree. You have your mic up.
It just seems like an odd thing to look at, but I'm supportive of delaying this till next year.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to delay this particular check and let the new council decide. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we will delay that one until the January meeting. Councilmember Hornish.
I would like to also highlight the relationship we have with the Chamber concerning the farmer's market, and the fact that, looking at their tax returns, they are making money, and we're paying them to run that business. It sounds like a gift of public funds. Just raising the question, I think it's a renewal every year that the city manager should be looking at as to whether or not we want to renew that on the same terms or different terms going forward. So just to highlight it.
Okay. The second item on consent was item number 12. Councilmember Hornish, you pulled that? Custodial services for city parks.
Oh, custodial services, yes. I had highlighted this question before the meeting tonight, telling I was going to pull it. The agenda bill was for 450, approximately $450,000 for one year of service from a contractor to open and close gates in the morning and evening and weekends, or just weekends, right? For six months, October through, well, it's a limited monthly period for the contractor to open and close gates between the months of October through March, and trash pickup at Eastlake High School Community on Saturdays and Sundays from October through March. So those, those two activities are only six months, and we're paying $450,000, as well as the cleaning of all city parks, restroom facilities amongst all the parks, and MOC. I just have to better understand how we couldn't bring that in-house and save hundreds of thousands of dollars. So hopefully you have some information.
Right. So, good evening. Angie Fesser, Parks Recreation and Facilities Director. So I want to back this up a little bit and talk about what the actual contract for. The annual contract is to cover janitorial services for all of City Hall, including Sammamish Police and the King County Sheriff's Office upstairs. That's five times a week. The MOC, which is done five times a week. Beaver Lake Lodge, five times a week. Beaver Lake Maintenance Shop, twice a week, and eight public restrooms at our parks daily. So this contract covers all of that. And one of the services they do provide is during the months of October through March, our parks maintenance staff works Monday through Friday, not on the weekends. Since the custodial staff is in the parks anyway on a daily basis, we've added to their contract to unlock, unlock the gates in the parks. It's less expensive for them to do it than for us to bring in city staff for a couple of hours to do that. The logistics of having one parks maintenance worker come in to open all the gates and close all the gates is pretty demanding, because you can't get to all the gates within an hour, an hour and a half. So you have to bring in two maintenance workers to do that twice a day to open and close the gates. So it's more cost efficient to add this to the custodial contract that we have. So in response to your request today, I did run some numbers, just very rough estimates. Obviously, we'd need more time to dive into this. But I used the schedule that we have with the existing contract and totaled up the hours necessary to perform those services, added in leave, training, other work activities, travel time between the sites, and then took those total hours divided by 20, or 2,080 hours per person to see how many employees we'd need. We'd need about six and a half full-time employees to perform the same services, which actually pencils out, because the contracted service that we use does use six people. These, these activities are performed at nighttime, and so there's usually two people that work together as well, because they're in the restrooms in the parks, they're in dark buildings and whatnot. So an employee cost at $95,000 a year, which is salary and benefits and the cost to have an employee at the second lowest level of our pay salary for the city, comes to a little over $600,000 a year. And then I figured supplies, equipment, other expenses related to those services, probably another $200,000. So just very roughly $800,000 a year for us to provide those services. In addition, there would have to be probably some purchases of capital for equipment and vehicles and some other pieces to make that work. Now, that being said, these are rough numbers. We'd have to drill into them a little bit more, but that's what I was able to put together this afternoon, just to give some rough numbers. Also, keep in mind, if the city employees do unionize, these staff positions would be under that umbrella as well, and I would believe the prices might, the process for that might be a little bit different as well.
So did you say our second lowest city employee is at almost $100,000 a year?
Not their salary, but their salary and benefits and all costs related to their employment.
Which is roughly 20% to 25% on top of salary, right?
It's a little more than that. But they're roughly, their salary is roughly $45,000 a year.
So we're paying up.
That's mid-range.
So we're adding 100% loading? If it goes from 45 to 95? I'm lost.
Well, these are the, the numbers. I don't have those numbers in front of me. Aaron, can you talk to, I got the numbers from finance today.
Well, if it's 45 with a 25% loading, that's about 55 or 60, not 95.
The numbers I received were about $4,500 a month for benefits, and about 54, either $45,000 or $54,000 a year, which is a mid-range in the salary range. So when we are doing estimates for new employees, we always bring that in at mid-range, plus we do the benefit package that includes the full family. So we're pretty conservative on those estimates, plus the additional costs associated with employees at the city.
No wonder we can't marry up a budget. Wow, that's expensive for employees for a second, and that's the second lowest payment. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
95 fully loaded? What's your loading? 25%?
No. If you look at the budget, if you look at the budget that we looked at when we bring in new employees, it's half, it's about half and half. It's half.
It's 100% loading. It costs 100% in benefits on top of salary. Never seen that in any operations.
Your mic is off, so. And Councilmember Hornish has the floor.
All right, well.
Your average benefit costs about $35,000 for all of those other benefits that are related to an employee. So that'd be retirement, medical, vision, dental, workers' comp, L and I, this is the whole, all the other benefit factors on top of just a straight wage.
How does that compare to private practice? I mean, because in my private practice, we use anywhere from 15% to 25% loading, not, not 100% or 80%.
Well, when you're looking at fully loaded costs, you're looking at other types of overhead costs loading in. This is just straight wage and benefits.
No, I'm talking only, my practice has been 20 to 20, 15% to 25% wage and benefits. Wages plus 25% max for benefit loading. And you're talking 80% loading for a 45%, $45,000 a year employee? Is that right?
Well, the 35, we're just talking about general averaging of, across all employees. So a general full-family medical, so you have to make some assumptions about what a employee benefit cost plan is, and that's the averaging for that. The wage is going to be set, depending on the skill level that you're hiring in at, so it's going to be different. So your percentages are, look higher if you're taking your average medical or benefit costs on top of a lower wage.
But it averages out typically.
It's the same $35,000 on a 150,000 employee.
But when I did budgets, I have, I have a fixed HR salary, and then I load that at 20% average loading of benefits. Now, it's different because of retirement. I understand that with the government, but I just can't believe it goes from 20% to 80%. That just is mind-boggling to me. A different question than what I'm asking, what we ask about, to be fair. But after four years, I didn't even understand that, that it's that big of a loading. Holy cow. Okay.
And I'm more than happy to provide the detailed information email tomorrow, the next day, so I can break that out and show you what I'm, show you the basis of the numbers that I generated.
I got another question. Do, how often did you say we clean the Beaver Lake Lodge and the MOC?
Beaver Lake Lodge is five nights a week.
How many traffic, how much traffic do we have there?
Well, we have quite a few rentals at that place. And a lot of times, we have double rentals on the weekends, and so it helps to cover when we have the rentals. And we have revenue generated from that facility, so that helped offset the cost of that. And the MOC, we also do five nights a week.
Six and a half. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion?
No, I'm not going to move anything. I wanted information.
I would like to move that we approve the contract.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the agenda item passes. Now, we are on to new business. The first one was relative to attorney coverage, and Councilmember Hornish, you had added this one, so I'll let you speak to it.
Yeah. And Mike, I want to, I appreciate the email that we got earlier today, and just for everybody that's watching in or in the audience. We've had some transition with Mike's office and a number of people, and I just want to make sure that we're covered as a city in our ongoing litigation. You kind of put together a list of litigation we have that's current out there. We have a Lupa petition, we have a, the Millers, we have the Growth Board hearing, and the Buckin Homes. I think those are the four that's currently out there, right? You had kind of mentioned that you're kind of hoping that we can defer the deadline for the Lupa, and I appreciate that. What if we can't? What if, what if the other side doesn't?
First of all, I, it's, it's more than hope, because the plaintiff's lawyer said he thinks he has a settlement with the county. So ideally, the city won't have to do anything on that. Even if we can't delay the initial deadline, the initial deadline is just a requirement under the statute for the city to prepare the record that was considered in issuing the permit and submit that to the court and the parties. So that, right now, that deadline is January 21st. We're still waiting for the county to have an attorney appear, so I can ask him or her as well.
Okay. All right, so that one seems not too risky. What I'm even, what I'm more concerned about is the Growth Board, which, as a refresher, it was delayed because it was so much work for your office to put together. I remember Kim Pratt saying that she was all for delaying it, because it was going to take a lot of work to pull together that record. So I'm really concerned about your ability, your office's ability to be able to do that work, when Kim was saying how difficult that was going to be, if you're a little bit on the shorthanded.
That record was due yesterday, and it was filed and prepared.
It was already done. Okay, so now we're just waiting for the, his response.
Yeah, next step would be Don Jaren's lawyer filing a brief, which is due January 21st, and then the city's response would be due February 12th.
Okay, if we have any concerns, what would be the process for us to maybe think about if there's some extra help that we might want? I'm trying to figure out how that would work.
Yeah. Chip, Chip's got some spending authority right now. We met today with David Pyle and Kelly Hildy, certainly indicated if, if, there's no pride of authorship here, if the city would like to check with Kim to see if she's got the capacity. There are other law firms out there that can do it. I've contracted with a woman who is a former associate of ours, but has been practicing land use for 16 years, including 10 years as the land use attorney for the city of Bellevue, and she's ready to help me with this. But again, I, I'm, I'm happy to do as much or as little as the city wants me to do.
Well, since it's mail last night, I don't think there's anything to act on tonight. I'm just trying to understand what that process would be, but I don't think there's any action. It was just a fact gatherer that I was concerned about. So, okay, that's fair enough. I've got all my questions answered.
Very good. The second item for add-on was the Reared Freed House. Deputy Mayor Moran, you added that. I'll let you speak to that.
So one of the things that has become a continuing, ongoing problem, and also generation of spending of money and time and energy from a lot of different sources, and it is okay to disagree with, with people at the city. And that is that we've got a situation where we have got the, a group, the Sammamish Heritage Society, who has been working for a very long time and have done an amazing job in trying to move this, their, this house forward. And they get grant money, and they've done just a ton of work on it. And there just seems to be a constant collide whenever it comes to, to working with the city. There just seems to be a collusion. And so one of the things that I'd like to propose is that we have the discussion of, rather than the city be in the lead on this house, is that the city basically remove itself from being in the lead on this house, and, and put this house in the hands of where it very much belongs, which is with the people that love this house and are going to take care of it, and have put all this time and energy into it, which is the Sammamish Heritage Society. Ooh, sorry, guys, that's getting late. And so I think that, one, they've shown that they're very capable of doing the job. They're very capable of going and getting their own grant monies, and they're, and so, you know, rather than everything they want to do becoming an argument in this, one process or another, or, and vice versa, I don't, you know, it just, I would like to suggest that we, you know, do what we can to turn over that house to them, to manage and ownership. So that would be my motion. So, that would be my motion.
Consider it, or to?
That we do it, that we turn over the house and ownership.
Mayor, if I could, and I, I didn't know this was coming up, so I don't know the specifics, but I think I'd ask that we put this off to the next meeting, because I do know that the house was donated to the city. I don't know if there are any restrictions on then what the city can do, covenant, deed covenants, or anything else in the conveyance that might impede the ability to transfer it to the historical society. So, I can get that information and take a look at that and report back, but I guess I don't want the council to spend time on something we may not be able to do if there's something in the earlier conveyance to the city.
Okay, then can we get a nod from council as to whether or not we are moving in that direction, just so that we don't spend too much time?
I will second the motion to consider that option.
What is your motion exactly now, just to give direction on investigation on these restrictions, covenants, and deeds that may have been attached to the original gifting of the house?
Exactly.
I'm sorry, what is the direction?
To give.
City Attorney Direction.
On the restrictions, covenants, and deeds that may be associated with the house that was gifted to the city of Sammamish.
To move in the process of trying to gift over that house.
Councilmember Stewart.
That seconded?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, would, would there be also, if we gave it away, if it was given to the city, isn't that a gift of public funds as well? So, would that be something to also consider? I mean, I just want to make sure we get all the information.
Yeah, that'll be part.
I mean, it seems weird, but I just, I just want to make sure we don't step in it.
Did you see what we got?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying I disagree. I'm just saying that as we go and research this, we're going to need all the information before we move forward with anything.
It will be part of the analysis, but typically, these things take place by, in the contract, there's some exchange of consideration that is the historical society, for example, agrees to preserve and maintain the property and make it available for public viewing, that type of thing, so.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to give direction to the city attorney on investigating restrictions, covenants, deeds, and any, anything else we need to know relative to the house. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by vote of 7-0, we will do that. Okay. How are we doing on time? We got nine minutes.
Nine minutes.
Not going to happen. All right. Council reports. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Oh, I'm hoping everybody read through. I emailed my stuff out last week, and that's what's exactly what's in the report. So, if you have any information that you would, or questions that you'd like to ask on what's coming up on the agenda for next year for EFNR, and what's coming up on the legislative agenda, and then on the calendar for next year, let me know.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so, I think I've gotten two back.
I, I did email you a list of questions, and I was hoping to get answers on those.
I'm going to, I've got.
Sorry, I'm going to ask the audience, if you want to have questions, if you want to have conversations, it's fine. I just ask that you step out into the hall. Thank you.
I've got from two. I'll respond to everybody at once, and then put it all out, and one big thing to.
Is there something, though, that we'll need action on before our first meeting in January for this legislative agenda?
Well, only if there was an answer you needed back immediately.
Well, no, I'm asking, so on the EFR schedule, are they going to adopt this agenda prior to January 7?
No, their meeting is after ours.
Okay, all right, so you'll get us the answers, and then we'll.
Their meeting is the ninth.
Give direction on January 7?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start down at the end of the dais. Councilmember Hornish, do you have anything?
No report.
Councilmember Valdorama?
No report.
Councilmember Ritchie?
No report.
Councilmember Stewart?
No, but I do have a question about yours.
Okay, well, I'll go to mine in a second. Councilmember Ross?
No report.
Okay, so I'll go to my report, and then you can ask your question as I go through it. So, the first thing I have on there is a meeting that I attended with our acting city manager and our acting public works director relative to the sighting of a comprehensive high school and an elementary school on the Providence Heights campus. Not a lot of substance there. The relevant information is that the Issaquah City Council is meeting tonight, and whatever they have decided relative to the SEPA appeal will inform the process going forward. And that process going forward also involves our city council making a decision on altering the underlying zoning of at least one of the parcels to accommodate the comprehensive high school, which is not allowed on the site currently. So, we may or may not have a comprehensive high school, and the reason I bring this up is because this high school and those, and the elementary school, frankly, are of importance, the land is Issaquah's, the road frontage is ours. So, there's a traffic impact, but also certainly an impact if it's not constructed, and we, as a council, may want to consider taking a position. So, but I think that may be here and gone, because we have no idea what's going on at the Issaquah City Council meeting this evening, and they will make the rezone decision, I believe, on the 16th of December, so. Okay, you had a question about my report?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the PIC meeting coming up on the 11th.
Oh, I was going to go there, okay.
That there's also a legislative agenda that you will be voting on for next year, and I felt like that was something we should discuss as a council and have a unified, or take a vote and have input on that, correct?
So, let me go back, because I thought your question was going to be relative to the first one.
Sorry.
So, before we go to the PIC meeting on December 4th, which is tomorrow, SCA board meeting, I forwarded on the bylaws changes. We need a voting representative. Right now, they have my name on the packet, but I don't have to be the voting representative. It's basically saying yes to their budget and saying yes to the bylaws changes. So, I don't know who's attending the meeting, and if, but we need to designate someone to be the representative for Sammamish at that meeting.
Who's going?
I'm going.
You guys can duke it out, then.
All right. Okay, that's easy. So, the pre, relative to PIC, they've only sent out the pre-PIC, and they just sent that out.
I thought I saw a legislative agenda.
So, if you have input relative to the, what's, what will be on the PIC next week, because we don't have the formal packet out, they, I believe what they sent out so far was the pre-PIC, so it's the, what will be on it, but I don't think it's formalized at this point. But if it is, I have not read it yet.
So, if they do put out a legislative agenda that you will be voting on, is that something that we could coordinate through the city manager to get our input and get consensus on somehow, since we don't have another meeting?
I don't know that we can get consensus on it, but you are more than welcome to email me any input you have on those, and I am happy to bring those forth, even if they are conflicting points of view. I can still bring all of that up at PIC.
Okay, great, thanks.
Mr. City Acting City Manager, you have a report?
I'll be real quick.
Okay.
Just a reminder, congratulations to Dan Pingree, who was appointed our police chief by Sheriff Mitzi Johanknick effective December 1st. Also, I appointed David Pyle there in the back. David, hand up. You all know David as our community development director beginning December 1st. The public works director recruitment is in process. Interviews are planned for December 16th. The HR director recruitment is also in process with interviews planned for January. A reminder that a meeting is scheduled with YMCA staff and council members Hornish, Ross, and Stewart for December, I'll be there too, for December 9th, from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, in the executive briefing room, and find, and you've already dealt with the voting member for SCA, so that's it.
Okay. All right, we do have an executive session.
Can I ask a question of the city manager, or acting city manager?
Go ahead, sorry.
There was a question I had two, three, four meetings ago about the Sky Apartments and the density, and I'm just trying to find out if there's been any follow-up on that, decisions, conclusions, and if so, when we can expect that, and/or how that would get out to the public as well, to understand, were the calculations done correctly? Because I think the response I got to the question was, we'll have to get back to you on that, and I've not heard anything yet.
The answer is yes, and David's right here to answer your question.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening, David Pyle, Community Development. So, we, after that question was raised, we did some analysis, and we put together a memo, a draft memo for you all as a council, and it had been routed to legal right about the same time we encountered a little hiccup in our legal process. We met with the mayor, deputy mayor, was, this was last week.
Last week.
And we walked through the findings of the memo, although the memo had not been through complete legal review at that point. So, we are in the process of finalizing it for the purpose of release to the council.
Okay.
At that point, it becomes a public document, could be posted to the city's website. The general conclusion of the memo, because I believe if anybody looked at the information, they would find this, you found it yourself here at the dais, is that the way in which, and I can't get into the details, because I'm not the density calculation expert in our group, it's another individual who's not here tonight, and she's done a great job of capturing the calculation and how it works in the memo. But the general gist of it is, is that the affordable housing pool allocations that were used were applied more liberally than what the code allows. The maximum density of Sky Apartments was not exceeded. So, there's a maximum that's set that they can achieve, and that maximum could be achieved from, that's a base they're granted by right. There's a maximum that they're allowed by right, but in order to achieve the maximum, there are two ways to get there. The first way is through TDRs, and because of the way our TDR program is set up, there's only a certain number of TDRs available that have to come from the county first, and then you can use local TDRs. And it depends on who owns those TDRs from the county, and they can actually lock up those TDRs so that other developers can't use them. And then, the other way to get to the.
I think it's 25 on a five-to-one basis.
I don't know the specific details, but I believe that's the case, but I'd have to, again, defer to Kelly Hildy, who has studied this at great length. The, the other way to get there is through usage of the affordable housing pool, and there's a calculation in the code, in 21B of the land use code, the Sammamish Municipal Code, that, that tells you how many affordable housing unit, pool units you're allowed to use for your allocation. And our understanding is that, that calculation was done incorrectly, which afforded them some, which allowed them some additional affordable housing pool units. They did not exceed the maximum that was allowed on the site, because that site is combined with the broader TRF properties.
Which has.
The Met Market properties, et cetera. So, the maximum was not exceeded, however, there were, there was a disproportionate amount of, number of units that were allowed from the affordable housing pool, which allowed them to get to a higher number than what they otherwise would have been able to achieve. So, this was done, understand, this was done under a completely different generation of staff. One of the benefits here is that we, as staff, have been able to look pretty deeply at what they did. We've captured it pretty clearly. We've issued a formal code interpretation. We've built a model, a density calculation model that's a locked PDF spreadsheet, so you put in numbers, you can't manipulate it. And we have some other recommendations in the memo, such as making a, a unified zone development permit, UZDP permit, a type-three hearing examiner process, as opposed to being a type-two administrative decision, much like what we did with Shoreline substantial development permits, which helped us significantly during the trail proceeding. We find a lot of value in adding the hearing to the process for complicated projects, because it allows a third-party auditor to look over the city's work, the applicant's work, the public comment received, and it really provides a fair environment for the community to access the process and provide public testimony on the record that might give the hearing examiner some idea of something that might not have been raised or recognized by staff. We, you know, we, we have a lot to look at, and we really do appreciate when there's a third-party auditor brought into the, into the process, at the end of the process, to say, hey, did you do the right thing? Did you look through the record properly? Did you look at the criteria properly? It keeps us on our game, and it also allows us to find things that we might not have found.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I need a motion to extend, and then we do have an executive session.
Move.
Okay, hopefully, we won't need it that long. Need a second? All right, second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor extending to 11:30, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by vote of 5-2.
We keep extending.
We're extending.
We move one every time.
Hold on, just a.
Do we have that?
15? Yep, yep.
City employee.
I don't, I don't know, are we?
I thought we.
Where, where did Chip go?
Oh.
Okay, so, this executive session is for potential property acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B. We're estimating 15 minutes, but there is some question. Can we get our acting city manager up here for just a second? Tom Hornish had a question relative to your executive session, and wanting to bring up one more thing there, so I don't.
I was.
Let's use your mic.
I was hoping that we could talk about city employee and the ongoing search for the city manager. Can we do that tonight?
I don't have the.
Not process for the search. I'm not sure what the specifics would be, but not process.
Not, no, it's not process. It's specifics.
Okay, so is that 1G? Okay, so 42.30.110.1G qualification of a performance of an employee, public employee. Okay, all right.
As long as the executive session thing is off, I think he's off. Okay, I move that we authorize the city manager to proceed with a real estate purchase and sales agreement to purchase the real property on parcel number 0777100040, in the amount of $3,927,000 plus associated closing costs for the purpose of the George Davis Creek Fish Passage Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by vote of 7-0, the property will be acquired. And now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn Councilmember Valdorama and Councilmember Hornish's final meeting.
I think they should move and second the adjournment.
That's right.
To adjourn.
Second.
Second, I'll vote against it now.
Of course, a fitting end. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by vote of 6-1, he wants to stay. Melanie, he has volunteered to clean up, and we'll have a reduction in the contract for maintenance, because he can go clean the toilets on too. He wants to stay.